Welcome, everyone. The December 11th, 2018 Select Board Meeting is now in session. Tonight, we're going to do three things. Primarily have a brief discussion about changing the evaluation process for the town manager. We will approve some liquor licenses. And as the third main agenda item, we will hear the last in a series of public presentations and discussions on the municipal side of the town budget. Previously, I've just said town budget, but when I say town budget, I mean the municipal side because that's what the Select Board gets involved in. The school committee has their own budget. So, all right. First, I'd like to start with liaison reports, public comment, and the town manager's report. Dan, would you like to start us off with liaison reports?
Sure. No liaising to report on, but I would like to make it clear to the board and the public that the final signed Comcast and Town of Reading contract has been executed and is available for examination on request.
Barry, no reports. I briefly went to the school committee last Thursday evening and was happy to hear that Chair Elaine Webb and Vice Chair Linda Snow-Doxer will join the ad hoc committee to establish human rights.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's it.
I have no report.
Okay. John?
Not necessarily a committee, but I do want to report that the Postmark Project is going to its next step, liaison to that particular project. I know that they've been into Town Hall, spoken with Jane, and some permitting's going on, and, you know, it's showtime. So, they're getting ready to go. I'll keep you posted as that goes.
Sunoco Station 2 doesn't exist anymore.
Sunoco's gone. Sunoco Station is gone.
Well, the building doesn't exist anymore.
It's a smoking hole.
So, we assume something's going on that front as well.
Getting free from the seats. Excellent. Okay, moving on to public comment. If any of you would like to speak, please state your name and address and direct your comments to the chair. Any public comments to see? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Bob for the town manager's report.
Thanks, Andy. Just one quick thing. On Monday night in Wakefield, Wakefield's Town Council with a C approved the intermunicipal agreement seven to zero for our chair to sit.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. We get Victor, huh? We get Victor, yeah. Can't escape. All right. The first item on the agenda is, oh, I should ask, are there any topics that were not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting? Just give people a chance. So, the first action item is changing the town manager evaluation process. This is something that Barry proposed having a discussion about last week, and given that each of us had some, we're not fully satisfied with the previous evaluation form process. And Barry has a motion before the board. Due to time constraints last week and the desire to get through most of the municipal budget process, we delayed that until now, that discussion. But I guess we can take 10 minutes and have a discussion on it this evening. So, I'll ask Barry to read the motion, ask for a second, and then we can have a discussion.
Okay. Can I just, before I read the motion, can I just sort of kind of prep it a little bit?
Absolutely, yes.
So, you know, briefly, I think all of us agreed that when we did Bob's evaluation process, that the process itself we found at best wanting. It was sort of haphazard. I think it culminated at our last meeting when we did town, when we did sort of the goals, and, you know, that was sort of a frustrating conversation. But really, it wasn't unanticipated because the whole process from the beginning was sort of not well thought out. And so, when we did Bob's contract, we did put in some dates and times certain about some of the process of evaluation. And so, what I'm going to propose is something that takes a little bit, I think, from the school committees of doing it, but not totally. And that is, is that we had discussed town manager goals. We discussed, you know, select board goals. We discussed joint goals. And I think that kind of gets confusing. And so, what I would like to see us do is implement a process where we have, because we as the Select Board, we need to do two things. One is we need to supervise our employee. But secondly, we are the policy-setting group for the town. So, like, when Bob does his goals and it's like, you know, setting the tax rate and doing classification and hiring a DBW director, those are sort of the day-to-day, mundane, operational stuff. That's not really goals. Goals are something that we all can kind of agree with as a policy and say, as a town, we want to move forward and do this. And for an example, I'm just throwing one out. It doesn't mean something, committing to it. So, for example, we can say, our goal is to increase the CIP factor of commercial property from 10% to 12% as a goal. And that's going to follow all different kinds of different strategies and things that we need to do. Sometimes that'll be multi-year kinds of things. But the goal would be something that's measurable, something that's accountable, something that we can go to back and forth as a group. And so, I think if we start with that process, right, and then where we're all in agreement, and again, this is not to substitute for Bob doing the day-to-day stuff, but just having a set of goals that we collectively agree upon and then figure out strategies for implementation, and then we have something to evaluate, and then a form that basically that we need to do to kind of do that. Over the last couple of years, it was kind of easy because our goal was to keep the lights on, right? We were running out of money. We needed to have an override. So, that became the overriding goal. And if you remember what we did, we came back and we discussed and we changed and we did all different kinds of strategies and we pivoted when we needed to do. I think now that that's done and behind us, we need to be more forward-thinking and thinking about the kind of goals that we want to put forward so that our town manager has kind of a direction set from us and that we also then have, there's a buy-in and that we can evaluate that. So, that's sort of the subtext. So, with that, you want me to read the motion?
Please.
Okay. To create a subcommittee of the Select Board, two members, which will have the responsibility of formalizing the process of evaluating the yearly performance of the town manager as stipulated in the contract signed between the board and the town manager. The subcommittee will recommend to the full board a yearly process and timeline, parentheses with date certain, for creating jointly agreed-upon goals between the board and the town manager and a suitable form for board members to evaluate the town manager's performance based on those goals. The subcommittee will also consider implementing multi-year goals. In carrying out this task, the subcommittee will work with town staff, including head of administrative services, the head of human resources, and the town manager. The subcommittee will present its recommendations to the full board no later than April 1, 2019.
A second.
Okay. Open enough for discussion. John?
So, what I heard you say before you read the motion and what the motion says sound like two different things. Okay? I mean, the motion is to create a subcommittee to better evaluate? I mean, that's, that's the purpose of this motion. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what you talked about leading up to that was that you'd like a different look at how goals are either arrived at and what they might be, the content. So, I don't think you were suggesting, and this doesn't, this motion doesn't suggest that we're now yet one month further along in the goals that we started with in June.
Those are all, yeah, I'm talking about.
It's all staying intact.
I'm talking about going forward.
Okay. So, this motion is really just about the recreation of a better evaluation system that's going to be more closely tied to what Bob's goals are. In this case, this year's goals are this year's goals. And it's going to give us an opportunity for better feedback, I guess, is what I'm reading into this. So, I just wanted to be sure we weren't starting over again.
No, but, no, we're not starting over what we just did. This is sort of a look, this is a look forward.
Perspective.
Yeah, a look forward. And I think the notion of jointly created goals was something that we did not have in this process, which I think made the process dissatisfying for most of us. We did all evaluations based on different forms. You know, Andy and sort of putting it all together sort of culled out, you know, put down as goals some of the things that each one of us put in our individual forms, which were all done in a different way. What I'm talking about is making the goals jointly agreed. And so, I'm not saying how to do it. I'm just saying, let's have the subcommittee figure out a process by which that happens, and then everything can get evaluated based on stuff that we've all jointly kind of done together.
Yeah. Well, I would just suggest that the, you know, the policy review subcommittee is meeting this week, as I recall. Is that correct?
Yes. Maybe more than one. Andy and I are meeting Thursday at 7:00.
We're primarily discussing session two.
It's the policies.
Yeah, it is the policies.
You know, in order to do what you're talking about, Barry, you're going to really have to almost install, install a policy that says, we get to this early. I mean, what we can't be doing is what we did two weeks, or last week.
We're chasing our tail.
Yeah. I mean, these things got to be done, I think, by the 30th of June. And, you know, that way Bob's got a year to operate with whatever's a mutually agreed-upon, you know, set of goals.
The date's certain on year of April 1st for the committee to report back.
For the evaluation process.
And the way we set goals, either multi-year or single-year.
Yeah, but not the goals themselves.
No.
This is the April 1 deadline date.
Yeah.
For having the process agreed.
Give ourselves a couple.
Yeah, three months to do it. That should be.
All right. Let's jump in. Barry, I agree with you. I think the process itself was clunky. But if we have, we're doing something new this year, to your point, which is the Select Board goals. And so, you have communications, policy, you have the Armelde Subcommittee, you and I have the economic development. There's a variety of other temporary subcommittees that we've established. And we haven't, even in the six months since we've created those, maybe a little less, we haven't made tremendous progress that we're reporting back. I hesitate to add one more subcommittee at this stage. May I make a friendly suggestion or friendly amendment to change the April 1st to perhaps June 30th? So that that way, perhaps at the start, at the end of Q1, the subcommittee can meet after we've made progress on all of the others. Because I've been asked where we are on communications, and we've hit the holidays, and I think we've all stalled out a little bit. So, friendly amendment.
Barry?
I mean, no argument. We're working our minds off. And it's another, it's another, that's another thing. But if we wait until June 1st, now we've got another, you know, it's almost like we're giving up on next year.
You're not going to get those goals together, the kind you're talking about, if you wait to have the.
That's the only, I mean.
Done in June.
I agree with you that, you know, it's just another, you know. But just because of the fact that we were sort of late on some other things, it's like, this is important, and I don't want to, I really don't want to go through another year where we're just, where we're not, I think, collectively coming up with what our agenda is going to be. And so, I think we need to kind of implement it sooner rather than later. I don't disagree with you, though. It's going to be tough.
I think we need to deliver on what we are, sorry.
Just a second. Dan?
Yeah, regarding the April 1st date, I would actually like to be one of the two people here, because I think I have a lot of background here in it. The April 1st date is a good date from my standpoint, and I wouldn't want to lose that. So, I'm going to suggest that.
You can't do stuff when you're not here.
Hardly, no. Hardly not. No, 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 no. I would suggest that perhaps there might be another member of the board, Mr. Halsey, someone who might have a little man with and be able to work with me on this. And I fully appreciate what Vanessa's saying, that people are out there.
Dan, just to keep us on point first, we're discussing.
The policy.
Friendly amendment.
Well, I'm asking if.
And the motion in general.
I'm asking if someone else is able to maybe prioritize this between now and April 1st. That would influence what I think about the date.
Prioritize whether or not to have a subcommittee?
No, whether to have a reporting date on the 1st.
So.
If the committee feels, if the Select Board feels as a whole that's not doable, fine. I'm just asking if someone else would join me and commit to that date, then we can keep that date.
So, but not to be members of the subcommittee?
Yeah. Well, we're going to talk about that, too, I would imagine, next.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I think the process is absolutely worth doing. And, but, last year, we started, our evaluations had to be in by what date?
Late August, early September.
Late August, early September, right. So, we would have to have an approved evaluation form. Actually.
You really need that.
Right. So, that will be looking, that evaluation that we do end of July and September will be evaluating Bob on the FY '19 goals we just set.
Correct.
And so, I see two separate things here.
Okay. That's where I'm going, too.
Yeah. One is that how do we evaluate, you know, how do we come up with a better way to evaluate the town manager? And, or one that is more consistent to all of the ways we think. And then, the other topic is a little different, and that is how to set town manager goals. Now, granted, some of the goals will come out of the previous fiscal year's evaluation. Or could.
Not too sure.
And so, and then, but my biggest concern is we committed earlier, I think in this summer at some point to, we listed a bunch of goals as priorities. We, you know, we prioritized them and selected the top five. And then recently, we added another ad hoc committee that Barry and Vanessa are working on. And we, to my, from what I've seen, we haven't made a ton of progress on those goals. So, before we set up another subcommittee, I'd like to get those five, I'd like to see before we vote on this, some progress on those five, six now, from those five, six subcommittees. I think it's a little perilous to keep adding subcommittees on and then when we're not being active enough on the other subcommittees that we already have or ad hoc committees. Yes, John?
I think that you're mixing apples and oranges here. We agreed on that there would be five goals of this board that we're working on, and those are set out in the subcommittees. Okay? The goal that we added last meeting was to Bob's goals. So, those are two totally separate things. We do have, so for example, we're, you know, Vanessa and I are working on capital projects. And we have met, and things are starting to happen. And, you know, in some cases, in the case of that committee, for example, you have to wake certain things out. This particular one, I would urge, since, you know, you've got, you've got another election coming. It'll happen on April 1st. We already know that Dan has made a decision not to run for reelection, so we know that there'll be at least one new person involved. I think it's really incumbent on us to follow Barry's suggestion here of an April 1st to put this together so that it's ready, so that, you know, when the new board, because every April, it's a new board, you know, even if it's the same five people. I mean, it's, you know, it's a new board. I do think that this is, this is a little added burden, but I think it can be, get done. You know, two people can get together and get this thing done. I do think that taking advantage of, I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, but Dan has done some work on this in past years, and that's been very helpful. We've caught away from that. I think part of that should come back. I do think that the only question here is the date. Let's be aggressive and try to get it done by April 1st. I mean.
Yeah. The only question, the question, the only question here is not just the date, it's the motion and whether we want to act on it. Vanessa?
So, you know, John, you do mark up a good point, which is that there is a new board that will be, that will be created in April. And there is something to be said for including that new board member's input into the evaluation process, because that's the individual who will in fact be participating in the evaluation going forward. So, the June 1st, or June 30th date allows us actually to have the best of both worlds because Dan can participate actively through Q1 and Q2, and then come the new election, either one of us four or the new member can join that committee and continue the process. And it still puts us in line with having the process, have the recommendations come to the full board in time for us to evaluate in on this. A little bit of a compromise.
You finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Just for the audience and those watching on TV, I wanted to clarify, there's, there are three things that we've been, three terms that we've been throwing out. Goals, goals, and evaluation process. The Select Board has, we have our goals that we are trying to complete. There are five of them, or six, made up of subcommittees. And then, those are Select Board goals. And Bob has a set of goals that, as Barry pointed out, often recommended by Bob and his staff, but agreed to by the Select Board as a sort of a policy-setting approach, pointing them in a certain direction. And then there's the evaluation process, which is, was a forum last year, and we were asked to rate town manager on various things, including the achievement notice scores. So, those are the three things I believe we are discussing here tonight.
So, in the.
Actually, this is what we, yes, Bob?
Can I ask a question based on something you just said and Barry's language? Past evaluations have considered goals, but evaluated the town manager doing his job, the goals being a part of that.
Yeah.
This forum suggests the evaluation will shift to the performance based only on goals.
Yeah.
What is the board wish to do?
Yeah.
That's pretty important to say.
It is, it is. And Barry, you mentioned that it's important for us to evaluate the town manager as supervisors. And then there's also a need to evaluate the town manager on achievement of previous goals.
No, Bob's right. That's what I'm saying.
Yes. No, I know, and that's not the way I see this reading right now.
Well, the board should give the subcommittee, if it's created, some idea of whether they want to keep the core competency ratings in the review, make it more goal-focused.
I can actually add a line to this, and then my other thing is that we will continue to evaluate based on the core competencies.
All right, that would be good. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well.
I wanted to throw in the concept of goals, because I think they meant different things to all five of us, and that's not helpful.
Do you want to make that as a friendly amendment? And then, if I agree is, was that the second or?
Yeah.
The maker of the motion? You were the maker.
Dan, you said.
You know, the subcommittee will also take into account.
Okay. I wanted to also, by the way, there's a dovetailing, Andy, of the work we're doing on sections one and two, the policy, because I think that's where you'd have to inflesh this stuff.
Yes.
So, that feeds into something we're already doing. It's not like we're ripping something up just out of whole cloth. So, I would like to add, just to make sure it's clear here.
Oh, you did it already.
Except for the friendly amendment.
I have another one.
Yeah, can we, Barry, you want to read that or do you want me to? The change.
Well, it basically says is, is that to evaluate the town manager's performance based on core competencies and those goals that are referred to previously.
Right. So.
Dan has another.
Yes.
That one sounds like it's not opposed to me.
No.
Okay, so it's friendly. Yeah, I just want to make sure there's a directive in here to formalize it in the Select Board policies. So, after the word "formalizing," the term "in the Select Board policies."
Right.
Second line.
Second line.
Maybe with commas around it.
Do we have it in our policies now?
I don't think so.
It's, that's within the four corners of what our policy should cover, right? It doesn't have to go to bylaws or.
I don't see why it wouldn't. Yeah, seems fine to me. You're going to have to have a hearing on it.
Right, right. But we have to do that anyway on policy changes. So.
Although isn't it.
Formalizing in the.
Maybe here?
No, no, no.
I was going to say including it in the Select Board policies.
Yeah, the corner.
At the end.
Okay, you can do it that way, too.
We have to do a timeout for a second so the chair, the FinCom can call them.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I'm sorry, Dan.
See, where'd you put it? Yeah, that's fine. That's better than when I.
I'm sorry, Dan.
See, where'd you put it? Yeah, that's fine, that's better than when I.
Including these in the select board policies.
So, if there's no objection, no.
Barry, you're okay with that?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, yes.
I feel like we've had a discussion on this, I think everyone's on board that this is something we should do. Again, I would, friendly amendment to change it to June 30th, just to give us a little bit more time.
That might have to be a real amendment.
That's not, yeah. It's meant as a friendly.
I mean, you, you've got the bandwidth, is that, I mean.
I do.
Does anyone else have the bandwidth, I mean, if anyone else has the bandwidth and wants to take it on, I feel we can get it done, I'd rather get it done in April, if not, then obviously, you know, there's only so much that the five of us are going to are capable of doing.
Andy, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I.
I'd be happy to serve.
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve as well, but again, I'd like to see this, a little extra time for this, like, June 30th, as Vanessa said. Again, to repeat, we have six subcommittees already ongoing, and, and we haven't seen a lot of progress from those six subcommittees, so I'm reluctant, very reluctant to have us vote on another one without seeing some more progress on those.
The other ones don't have dates, do they?
No, they don't, but we all set them as priorities.
Yeah, but some of them are going to be ongoing through the year.
Right.
We're, we're, we've made a lot of progress on communications, so, and I feel that we're, you know, close to bringing that, I would think.
We're talking policies, we'll go through on Thursday, what we plan to look at, and agree on. Here's the pieces of work we need to do. I, it's up to the board in the end, but.
Dan has already, you know, graciously agreed to join, so it's between.
Yeah, yeah. And just one more question on your proposal, Barry. So, you propose to, formalizing the process of evaluating yearly performance on town manager. And then, what that evaluation will be based on will be created by a, is that?
Well, no, it's, I mean, it's in, it's in, it's in there basically to evaluate it based on jointly put-together goals and core competence.
And it has to be approved by the board.
We're going to come up with a form, basically.
Right, but to me, it doesn't read that way, right, as it says, the subcommittee will recommend to the full board a yearly process and timeline with dates, with dates certain, for a clearly agreed-upon goals between the board and the town manager, and a suitable form for members to evaluate the town manager's performance based on core competencies to those goals. So, the, 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 the goals are based on. The, what, what, what I. Town manager, and a suitable form for the.
I'm asking the subcommittee.
Yeah.
To create a process, or to come up, to codify.
Yeah.
To basically, to, to put into our culture, right, a process on which yearly, the town manager and the select board will come up with jointly agreed-upon goals and directions. That's our job as policy setters, his job is to go and make it happen, with our, with our help.
Right.
Also, to create a method, a form, a process, by which we can evaluate his performance, I like what we just did, based on the core competencies, the things that he's supposed to do in his day-to-day job, as well as how he's working toward implementing those jointly established goals.
So, can, can I suggest that, so we, we have three members for a two-member board, let's pick two and vote and call it a day?
Well, first, we have to just agree that we're going to do this, and then we'll nominate, is how, how it works, right?
I, I guess, would, would you consider, I want to make more clear that the town manager's goals, any town manager moving into the future, should be based on policy setting of this board, where the direction we want the town to go in, right?
Right.
And plus, goals based on the core competency evaluations.
That's right.
That's not how it reads right now. There are two separate things, one is to create a great upon set of goals between the board and the town manager, and then, the second one is to create a suitable form for board members to evaluate, so.
In fact, there's, there's, there's two.
Yeah.
Two pieces of work, that they have to sort of, policies that they need to create to bring that here, that we can decide if that's how the direction that we want to go, right? Because right now, the goal, the goal-setting process, it's not jointly done, right? I mean, and we had different views of what, you know, there are some people who put, like, a goal should be what somebody put in an evaluation, that's the end of the process, the goal should be in the beginning of the process.
Right.
So, just how we define it, and how we do it, I think is something that I envisioned that this subcommittee will come up with the recommendation for how the board goes forward in the future, right? And so, and then, just the, the right, the right piece of paper by which we can then do it, because everyone agreed that what we had was not adequate, so, that's the two, those are the two, that's, those are the two missions, you know, we don't, so, that's what.
If we're not ready to vote, or if everyone isn't on the same page, may I suggest that we table it, or?
Could.
Vote, because I.
I'm ready to vote.
I want to.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to table this until the first, our first meeting in January.
We already have a full agenda in Jan, I mean, is that it?
No, we don't.
The majority, the majority of folks not ready to vote? I mean, I just care, I mean.
Yeah, Barry, I'm sorry. I'm going to bring, bring this back, bring this back in. I'd like to table this discussion.
You have a motion on the table.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, you have to move to table it.
I'm moving to table it, and get on with the rest of our agenda, so we can stay on track.
Does that happen automatically, does that need to be voted?
Well, no, it can happen automatically.
Oh, no, you have to move to table in your.
No, that's not, I think that, that in the policies, the chair has the power.
The better motion, Mr. Chairman.
The chair is supposed to preside by, over the meeting.
If you're intending to bring it up on January 8th, you should postpone to a time certain, being that day, rather than just table. Tables are definite.
Okay, so postpone to time certain for January 8th.
I think I have a point of order here, we have a motion on the table, it's been seconded, we're discussing it, I think you have to vote on it.
You can make that motion, that's a subsidiary motion to any motion, to table, to postpone to a time certain.
Okay, well, let's get on with doing something, let's vote on something.
Just a minute, John, and Dan, this board, according to our council, it does not follow, have to follow Robert's rules, right?
You've got to have some rules.
You have to have some rules, and what we had, and that's perhaps, we could flesh that out a bit more in the first section of our policy, but right now, all we have is, the chair approves the agenda, the chair, as far as the chair's roles, his role is concerned.
Look, Andy, may I interrupt? There are basic, there's like a basic set of 12 motions that anybody uses to table, to postpone to a time certain, to adjourn the meeting, that's basic stuff, so you're saying we're not going to have any of those available?
No, but, but for instance, with this, this exercise, I think, in, in fleshing this out.
I just want to know what you, what did you mean by what you just said about Roberts? We have no rules, we have no building?
No.
I think we're getting off topic. We're already behind on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I, I would draw my motion, I would draw my.
I move the question, I'm sorry, I'm moving the question.
All right, John, please wait to be acknowledged.
Can I acknowledge?
Yes.
I just want to understand, there's a motion on the floor, there's two friendly amendments, the first two yellow areas behind me, and then, there's June 30th, that I think is a real amendment as opposed to a friendly amendment. And then, you put a third motion on the floor, you have to vote on motions.
Is that a motion, actually, for June 30th? I don't recall that being seconded.
Vanessa brought it up as a, as an amendment, whether she called it a friendly one or not, it's, it's out, it's out as a discussion.
Was it seconded as an amendment?
Yeah, it was.
Oh.
So, you, you can't just decide this without voting, you can vote to agree.
I, I hear you, Bob, and I would like to vote on this, but I'd like to wait until January 8th, I'd like to table it until January 8th.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask what you're going to learn between now and January 8th that you don't know now?
I think time to, to discuss this further.
I'll second Andy's motion, just to move us along.
Vote on the motion to move the question to January 8th?
In favor?
In favor, remember, we're running a little bit behind, but.
Okay, so.
Who is opposed?
I'll move to, I'll table, I'll vote to table, let's just, you know, I can, I can, just.
Okay.
You're drawing your motion.
Wait a minute, what is going on here?
Wait a minute, Bob.
John.
John.
Bob's over there. Three people, I'm sorry, John, please wait.
I am John Roberts, but, you know.
Please, raise your hand, and I'll, and I'll, you know, I'll acknowledge you, but I think we just hit a vote.
Can we just have a formal vote?
Yes. Who, who is in favor of tabling this motion until January 8th?
I am.
Fine, let's just table it.
Um, thank you.
I'm opposed.
Opposed, sorry, Dan, John.
Okay.
Great. Transferring licenses.
All right. Now, we move on to liquor licenses, to start, we have a hearing on the transfer of a liquor store license at Bertucci's, and Vanessa, can you read the hearing announcement?
To the inhabitants of Reading, please take notice that the select board of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on December 11th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the select board meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on the transfer of an annual restaurant all alcohol license from Bertucci's Restaurant Corp. to Bertucci's Restaurant LLC, 45 Walker Brook Drive, Reading, Massachusetts. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic will be available in the select board pack made public on Thursday, December 6th, 2018, on the town website. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing, or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on December 11th, 2018, to the town manager's website, by order of Robert W. Lusher, town manager, December 4th, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Just open the hearing.
This is opening here.
There's no vote.
No, we have to.
I'm trying.
So, at this point, and like, Bob, Bob, did you just present the information?
Is there anyone here for, from Bertucci's?
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Just want to make sure.
This is just because Bertucci's corporation went bankrupt, so they are simply switching their corporation name, so that it's in a new name, nothing's changing in any of the stores, nothing's closing, it's simply just a corporation change.
Oh.
Because of bankruptcy, it's only certain stores.
Bertucci's with the big B, or?
Yeah, Bertucci's, yep. So, it's all the stores, it already actually went through the AVCC because it was such a big change, so they did it inadvertently, but you guys formally have to take a vote on it.
Right, and have to have a hearing, so, would anyone like to speak on this, on this hearing? No? So.
I have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Move, select board approve the annual restaurant.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, oh, it's closing hearing.
We have to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing?
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, I jumped it on there a little bit. Move that the select board approve the annual restaurant all alcoholic beverages license transfer from Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation to Bertucci's Restaurant LLC.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, I think next, Bob, there's the matter of changing the manager at Longhorns, and as well as the liquor, approving the remaining liquor licenses.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, let me just ask, is any police officers here? There were, there were comments, and they just.
Yes, transfer the new manager, and move that, there, I'm going to be transferred, it's devastating, too much. No issues.
Okay. Yeah, same with the remaining liquor licenses, and this will, I think two people turned in their license, the chair, one of the clubs.
Yeah, one of the clubs did not.
And the painted sip.
And painted sip.
Painted sip, then, right now?
Yeah.
What? After all that?
Which club?
The, the W.
Did, did, were they, were they late, or?
No, no, she was early and told us.
She told us that she's not real.
I have a motion.
Yeah.
Vanessa. Move, select board approve the change of manager for an annual restaurant all alcoholic beverages license at Longhorn Steakhouse, 39 Walker Brook Drive.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Then the remaining liquor licenses, voting?
Yep, those are just ones that hadn't come through yet before your last vote, so.
Make the motion?
Yep.
Move that the, that the select board approve the all alcoholic restaurant liquor licenses for Bertucci's Restaurant Corp., at 45 Walker Brook Drive, Chipotle Mexican Grill Colorado LLC, at 46 Walker Brook Drive, Mandarin Reading, at 296 Salem Street. For a term expiring December 31st, 2019, subject to the following conditions, all bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
There's one more on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay, let's finish our alcohol stuff here, because I, because I do have a question on our alcohol licensing before we leave this.
Oh, yeah.
Please go ahead.
But not, not specific to this. All right, all right, sure.
Move that the select board approve wine and malt restaurant liquor licenses for, Bangkok Spice. Thank you, Bangkok Spice Thai Restaurant, 76 Haven Street, for a term expiring December 31st, 2019, subject to the following conditions, all bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor? Is this the last one?
That's it.
All right, John.
While we're on the alcohol licensing topic, I would like to suggest that, at our earliest convenience, we explore, we do not have currently beer and wine licenses available for the, any of the convenience stores. That has come up several times, just in the very recent past, and there is a certain process we'd have to follow in order to obtain those licenses from the state, and I would suggest that we do two things, one, and I'm happy to volunteer to do this work with Bob, actually, is to do the research necessary to find out what we need to do if we wanted to do such a thing, and then, secondly, have a discussion about that. We've got a lot of convenience stores that are being put at a somewhat a, you know, competitive disadvantage with neighboring towns, you know, they use the convenience stores here in our town, and as licensing is happening in surrounding towns, they, they certainly can be losing competitive edge here, and I think that we need to, at all times, look after all of the businesses in town, we know that they're going to be faced with, next year, some added expense on the tax side, I think we should be looking at ways to help them on the revenue side as well, and so, to that end, I would be happy to do the research, and as soon as we can get it on the agenda, have a discussion, that's just kind of, just offering that out.
And this is for convenience stores?
For, a beer and wine license for convenience stores.
Right, that's right.
We do not possess those in our bag of licenses, we've got a couple licenses that have come back, you know, in this year, but we can't just reassign those.
Didn't we do one?
When we redid it, and Bob can fill you in on this.
Yes.
For the board members that are relatively newer, a few years ago, after decades of research, we determined that the alcohol licenses in Reading were at least questionable for many years.
Oh, right.
Not to say they weren't legal, but we just weren't sure, so we went through an unusual process that made them completely legal.
Special town meeting.
Through a homeroom petition, so we had a special town meeting, a homeroom petition, and off we went. I, I. I did speak to town council about this possibility a couple weeks ago, and it appears that we have to go the same route. But what that exact process is, I don't know. Is it going to vote a vote of the voters, a vote of town meeting? A vote of town meeting is almost certain. A vote of this board is almost certain. A vote of the voters is not clear. What I'm saying is, I am going to visit town council tomorrow, I'll add this to the list. I don't know if it's feasible to do it at April town meeting. We'll certainly make every effort to do that.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Right, thanks. I'm glad you did.
Because I'd hate to have us, you know, have to wait a whole... If it's a vote of the voters, we're going to have a vote in April. And, you know, I mean, if... I do think that we need to look out for our businesses as best we can. We know that they're a year away from increased tax expenditure, and therefore, I think if there's a responsible way for them to be able to add to the revenue line, we should explore that, at least. So that's why I bring it up tonight, so that... Because as we all know, government just flies right down the road in the way it gets things done. We need to get out in front of this early.
Any other, some other comments from the board?
So, John, are you looking for some... Are you looking for pressure?
I'm just suggesting, A, that it be on our agenda. B, I'm suggesting that I'm happy to do the background work in concert with Bob, so that I can bring it to you. So you've got, you know... Food for discussion.
I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. And I do think it might be wise to ask the Board of Health to weigh in on this.
Okay.
Well, and when we're ready to do something.
Yes.
I think prior, as part of the initial discussion, I think they should be included.
Right, because...
It's a public health issue as well.
Yeah. It could be a public health issue as well. So, and maybe a public safety, I don't know. But I'm happy to have that.
Well, we'll get it moving down the road for further discussion and possible action. If that's okay.
And you'll let me know when you're ready to speak on the agenda.
Just to clarify, so you just look for beer and malt licenses for these establishments, not hard liquor?
Yeah, not a full package store, a beer one. It's a convenience store, you know, I mean, they've got space issues as well, so, you know, I think this is something that could fit.
I think Arcos would be a good one to add to that section as well.
Well, and as I serve on that board, I'm happy to bring it up today.
Perfect.
All right. And I'm liaison with public safety, so I'll be happy to talk to the chief.
That would be great. All right. So now we move on to the last portion of our meeting, the last of the budget presentations. Sorry, off topic for one second, so I don't forget. Bob, would you, for January 8th and Barry's amendment, there were some amendments written in there and highlighted in yellow. Can you send that out to the board, so we have a chance to review them and be...
Another pending amendment on the date changed.
Just a check, can I ask a...
Sure, yeah.
That we make that the first agenda item on January 8th, so we can kind of get it done? Bob?
Right now you have at least tentatively planned the Wakefield 40B, so just bear that in mind.
What actually can we do about that as a board?
Nothing.
So why is it coming before? I mean, I have concerns about it.
We're going to write a memo to you, and just like a DRT, as if we're in Reading, and the board can certainly, legally you can do nothing. Certainly ask Wakefield to do things.
Oh, we can?
You can, yeah. You could ask to have a traffic study, for instance. They're not obliged to do it, you could ask.
Thanks, thanks.
And I'm just thinking, that might be a full house, just so you can keep that agenda item.
We can talk about that, but we can get it done. All right. So a few words before we hear the last of the municipal budget presentations from town manager and staff. As it says in the town charter, the town manager proposes his municipal budget following consultation with the Select Board, and that's what we've been doing over the past three nights and tonight. So therefore, at the end of the presentation, the board will have the opportunity to provide Bob with any additional input that you'd like. I think Bob expressly stated an interest in hearing feedback on new additions that have been proposed by some department heads, if I read your memo correctly.
Or anything else.
Or anything else, yeah. So I'd also like to encourage comments and questions from the finance committee during these last presentations. This is your area of speciality, and I think your insights will greatly enhance our discussion. Bob, tonight we'll hear about the following retirement commitments that we have, or, in other words, pensions to our employees, health insurance for our employees, capital of projects and enterprise funds. So a brief word on capital projects and enterprise funds. Sorry, my braces make it. Still getting adjusted to me, adjusting to my braces as far as speech is concerned. For the uninitiated, which looks like most of you in this room are not, for the sake of the record, capital projects include the maintenance of and improvements to our public schools, our public buildings, sorry, which include, for example, schools, library, police, and fire stations, et cetera. And the other property that we own, such as town vehicles and athletic fields. The project and how much they cost, and how the town plans to pay for them, will be explained in Bob's presentation of the capital improvement plan. Enterprise funds are used to maintain essential town services, such as water, sewer, storm drain services. It's important to note, Bob will present on the status of these funds tonight, but it's important to note that when you pay your water bill, your sewer bill, and your the stormwater rate, that money goes back into this fund, and partly funds these funds. So those are fees, not taxes, so it's a little different than the rest of the presentations we've been hearing this evening. And with that introduction, I'll leave it to Bob.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Tonight we're going to spend a little bit more time on the first two topics, pensions and health insurance. Ahead of the FY13 budgets, which is quite some time ago, we passed a more thorough update that we'll do another one tonight. Then we followed a format that then FinCom actually had suggested and worked with us on, and they found it at the time very instructive. So rather than recreate the wheel, we just simply updated a presentation. So the presentation wasn't necessarily trying to drive any message home, it was just updating things that were said seven, eight years ago. At the time, FinCom found this presentation very instructive. I hope you do, too. We'll start with Sharon Angstrom and Judy Perkins talking about pension obligation. They'll come up there, and then I'll get back to the health insurance with Larry Tissero and myself, to resell it myself. So we'll start with these two.
Thanks, Rob.
So I know that you all know me, Sharon Angstrom, the finance director. This is Judy Perkins, she's the HR director, and we'll need to gather this presentation together.
Sharon, who does have the guys to speak up at her?
Okay.
Thank you.
So this first slide shows all of the potential benefits that a Reading retiree might collect in retirement in the employee pension system. So if they're a teacher, they would be part of the mass teachers' system, and then if they're not a teacher and they work for the town and they're full-time or considered full-time, which is 32 and a half hours a week, or 1,690 hours, they're part of the Reading contributory retirement system. And that's not a choice. If you're a full-time employee, you have to do that. And anybody who started July 1st, after July 1st, 1996, has 9% of their salary taken up, plus 2% of anything over $30,000. So you're looking at about 10% of people's salaries going in to fund their retirement. Social Security, we do not contribute to Social Security as municipal employees, but there are people that have worked in the private environment, I have. If you've worked at least 10 years, 40 quarters or 10 years, you could potentially be collecting Social Security, so that's another benefit they might be collecting. And then O is other post-employment benefits, so that's health insurance in retirement.
That's for the retirees?
For retirees. So these are some myths that they had gone over several years ago, and we're updating that same presentation, just to kind of, because these are commonly heard myths about pension system. The Town of Reading is generous to employees by having a pension system. The fact is, in Reading, eligible teachers belong to the mass teachers' retirement system, and other employees belong to the Reading contributory retirement system, and this is in accordance with mass state law. So it's not them being generous they're required to by law. The other myth they commonly hear is that the public pension system is free for the public employees, and the cost is borne by the taxpayer. Today, Reading employees hired under the age of 30 who remain employed, what we call long-term employee, at least 25 years, through payroll deductions plus the return on their contributions, will pay, in most cases, will pay more than the expected value of their retirement. Another that we hear is public pension system employees already get a good retirement benefit from Social Security. In Massachusetts, public sector employees are not eligible for Social Security benefits unless they qualify in the private sector, as I alluded to prior, from another job. If so, they're subject to this wingfall elimination provision, which will reduce their benefit by about 55%. So the way that it was explained to me at trainings I've been to, is that when you go for Social Security, they look at your 35 highest years. Well, I worked 25 years in private, so I'll only have 25, so I'm going to have 10 zeros. And that's how they figure out your average salary for those 35 years, and that's their starting off point. So anybody who hasn't worked 35 years is going to kind of be at a disadvantage for all those zeros anyway. And then after they're done with that and they figure out what your Social Security would be, then they can look at your pension and then offset you by up to $400 a month. So it's not like they get the benefit of both, they actually are being very strongly offset on the Social Security side. In addition, the government pension offset exists, and that's when you're trying to collect Social Security benefits on your spouse's Social Security. They'll actually deduct 2/3 of your pension from that Social Security benefit. So I think these are things that people just don't know, because it's just not involved, so it's important to point it out. Another myth is, while the current rules have changed, we have pension reform. I wish I was a typical Reading retiree, I'd be living on Easy Street.
Do people really say that, Sharon?
You'd be surprised.
I see the retirees nodding their heads, okay.
In 2018, the average Town of Reading retirement pension was about $32,000 a year, and the distribution is below. So about 45% of our retirees get a pension that's in excess of $30,000, 17% between 20 and 30, 10%, I mean, 24% get $10,000 to $20,000, and then 14% get less than $10,000. So 55% of our retirees have a pension that's less than $30,000, so they're not reaping... Most of them are not reaping the pension benefit. Another thing is you probably mentioned, before I start this example, because I want to kind of demonstrate these, slides came from a Parry presentation done by their actuary, General Menzo, and he kindly offered them up to me, so I could demonstrate the actual calculation for a person or several people, so you could see how this all works. So we all have 9 plus 2 taken out of our check for the most part, unless they started prior to 1996. And when it says group 1, group 1 employees are people who have non-hazardous jobs. So when we say group 4, we're referring to police officers and firefighters. And they tend to have a different, they're on a different schedule, because their jobs are considered more hazardous, so they retire and can get... So the goal for most people is to get to 80% of your average salary, and that average salary is calculated by taking your three highest years. If you were hired before April 1st, 2012, if you were hired after that, they do a five-year average. But to get to 80% of that benefit, you need to work 32 years and be age 65 if you were hired before April 1st, 2012, and after April 1st, 2012, you'd have to be 67. So to get that combination to work, to get 80% of that average, you have to have 32 years in and you have to be at least 65. For group 4 employees, that age is lower than 55, and I think they're required to retire by 65, because the job is so hazardous. Other employees that would qualify under that would be Armelde Lyman.
Isn't the general manager also group 4?
Yeah, she is. I can't imagine she's climbing, but yes.
I think she is.
If she's climbing the pole, she absolutely is.
I'm not sure about that.
So this is an example provided by Parry, so they're saying, okay, we've got a group 1 employee hired at age 25, starting salary at $30,000. We're assuming that their pay goes up 4% per year, and they're not capping it. I mean, a lot of, the way we work is that you get the top step, and you don't go at higher, but this is assuming that their salary grows endlessly by 4%. And then the employee contributions earn 6 and 8% return on their investment. So this is the calculation, the valuation, done by the actuary, and it shows you at age 55, this person would get a yearly benefit of $40,500, and that would cost $475,000. That's the present value of that benefit. Their employee contributions will have exceeded $566,000, so they fully funded their whole benefit themselves, without any contribution from the town. At age 60, it goes up to $76,700, present value at 806, and then accumulated contributions are 901. So you can see that there's definitely no contribution needed here from the town for these folks. And then 65, obviously the benefit goes up, because they've reached that magic number. And these examples are those people prior to April 2012. So 65 would be that magic number, where they've got that 32 years in, and they've got the age factor of 65. The maximum benefit they would get was that 106,600, but they've contributed $1.4 million, so.
Sharon, just go ahead.
So the difference in the value versus the accumulated value of employee contributions, where does that difference go?
It stays in trusts. So all of the money that the employees put into their contributions is invested on their behalf, and it kind of goes into the pool. And so we're offering a defined benefit, so they get their benefit to the day of their death, depending on the option that they select. So if they are option A at their retirement, they get the maximum benefit, but once they die, there's no benefit for anybody else. If they do option B, they do, they get their benefit to the day of their death, and then there's a beneficiary, you can receive whatever's left in their annuity, which is whatever was taken out of their account all along. And then if it's option C, you're covering the retiree and their spouse usually, so that's a lesser benefit. So for each benefit, you're getting a little bit less each month, but then they're covering that retiree to the day of their death, and then their spouse as well. 2/3 of the benefit would go to their spouse to the day of their death, so depending on that. So if there's access, it's almost like a gain to the retirement system, because they've fulfilled their responsibility to that benefit.
Sharon, could I just ask a question about the present, what the present value represents? If, am I understanding in this correctly, and that that present value represents what the retiree could expect to...
It's actually what it costs to provide that benefit throughout their retirement. What it would cost today to invest enough to...
Because they're collecting the dollars today, but they're paying it out in the future, so the value of that dollar in the future is a lot less than the dollar contributed today, so it's always discounted.
But the accumulated value of the employee contributions is just adding while the contribution's up every year, and then increasing them by 8%, it's like a compounding effect. And so there, I have actually this spreadsheet that backs this up, if it's helpful to see it.
Please don't.
Yeah, I don't know that, it might be more confusing, honestly. So we'll move to the next example. In the next example, we have another group, 1 employee, age 25, his benefit, I mean, his pay at hire is still $30,000, but his pay is increasing at 5% a year, still getting an 8% return on his contributions. And in this case, at age 55, he is fully funding. At age 60, he's a little bit short, but you can see he's mostly funding, $48,000 short of fully funding. And then at age 65, absolutely fully funded. And then at age 65, absolutely fully funded. So that's why you hear a lot of people saying, people who are contributing nowadays are fully funding their pension, because in most cases, they're either mostly fully funding or fully funded. And then we have a third example here, a person is age 35, $50,000 at hire, and then 4% increase, 8% per year. In this case, because the person is over age 25, and the number of years in is going to be different, at age 55, possibly they're going to have enough in there, but it's going to be a small shortfall if there is one. And then, you know, at age 60 and 65, there would be a contribution from the town because there isn't quite enough in there. But a lot of it is there, most of it is there. So even when you have somebody who's a little bit older, the majority of the contributions made by the employees is going to fund the majority. I mean, you're looking at a difference, a person makes $50,000 a year, and at age 60, your less than one year salary is the town's contribution to its total retirement. And then age 65, less than two years. So a small contribution, even when you have an older employee, less than 2 years. And then at example 4, we have an age 25, $30,000, and then a 4% increase, but then we're only getting 7% return on the investment.
So Sharon's better. So basically, what the shortfall is or isn't also just depends on the general returns on the sort of pension fund. So if the pension fund is managed well, you know, then basically it does better, there's more there, if, you know, if it's invested in things that are somewhat risky. Or, you know, we just have downturns in the market, like our 401Ks, it goes up and it goes down. So you never really know exactly, I mean, you have some actuarial estimates about what you think it's going to be, but if the market outperforms that, it's better. If the market does worse, then that liability becomes greater. And that changes almost a year, it changes year to year.
Yeah, but I think the point is to make that because they went July 1st, 1996, to non-plus 2, the intent was to get the employee to fully fund.
To catch it up.
Yeah, because what had happened is for the first 40, 50 years, they were just paying as they went and accumulating this liability that, you know, was going to become unsustainable, and that's why they've increased that percentage required of the employee every year to get to a status where really the town's contribution is small, any for those folks, unless they go out on a disability or unless they're, I would say that the one thing that Jim Lomenzo had said to me when I spoke to him on the phone is that for public safety, you'd be more likely, you know, a Group 4 person, because they retire early, you'd have more likely to see that the town has to contribute something towards it. But still, they're still having, like, 10% of their pay taken out and invested for them for many, many years. So you're going to see a lot of that retirement, even on a, even on a public safety employee being funded by the employee, but they'd be more likely town share because they are retiring younger.
So the largest component of the liability is probably from workers that started before 1996 or a while ago, that basically didn't contribute as much as the workers now.
Yeah, actually, I have to go from our actuary, knowing that I would remember these.
I apologize.
If they started, if they started in 1984 to June 30th of 1996, they were 8 plus 2, so it wasn't much left.
Oh, okay.
And then 1975 to 1983, we were 7 plus 2, and then prior to 1975, they were 5 plus 2. So it's the people going back to the 70s that really had the 5 and the 7, where they maybe didn't contribute enough, and we weren't putting in our share and investing it, having that time to get to what we need to fully fund. So what you pay in the assessment is really largely towards catching us up for all the years that we didn't put our share and invest in, prepare for those people's retirement.
We have a question from.
Sharon, what's the average annual return that the pension fund has been?
It's usually between, I want to say it's a little under 8%.
So it's pretty close to the assumption you showed.
But I think the valuation, the most current valuation we have for retirement pension is, I think we're expecting 7.65%. We're always bringing that assumption down, because it's better to be conservative with those valuations. But back when this presentation was done, 8%. As you're seeing, most of them are going, trending down, and we kind of try and follow suit with what you see, correct? Things, the numbers shift days. So we're having another valuation for the pension, January 1st through 1996, so just around the corner, and the board's already talked about even if we make down further, they got this count rate down even further so that we're more conservative, that we're expecting less return, because you can't always get those returns. There's times you get a lot more, and then there's times you get less, and so we want to be more conservative. So it's not tough to push it out. And I have some slides of where we stand.
So the average rate has been, what, the second half?
In retirement planning, those are aggressive numbers. 8's an aggressive number.
And that was, this was when he did his presentation, but he's like, I already got these slides, but at least demonstrates the point about, you know, but definitely we had, like, in 2008, some awful numbers, you know, so, I mean, a downturn in the economy can be a real hit on these funds. So the last example we showed, I forget what it was now, age 25, $30,000 at hire, 4% a year, and a 7% return. And bringing that return down to 7, to 7 actually made it so at age 55 and age 60, there is a contribution due from the town, but by age 65, fully funded. So, but to get to that 80%, that magic number, a lot of people want to get to 80% of their average pay, they need to be at least 65. They could have so many years in, but they're not going to get the age factor they need to to get to 80 without being 65. And for me, 67.
Yeah, that's the real incentive for public employees to retire later on in life, because they want to, they want to max out on their.
Yeah, I mean, you know, most people want to get as much in their retirement as they can, because it's, you know, 80% of your pay, that's even a big difference.
So it's, you know, it's just coincidentally beneficial to the person to retire at a later age, and also usually for the town as well.
And the longer the money's there, the longer it can, right?
Yeah.
So this is just a slide talking about the Reading contributory retirement system, which is the board that covers all the retirements for the non-teachers. It's overseen by Parry, which is the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission. As I mentioned, teachers are covered by mass teachers, which is a state plan. Mass General Act Chapter 32 establishes and governs all the retirement programs. And the Reading Retirement Board has five members, which includes myself as the ex officio, as part of my job as the town accountant, to serve on that board. Benefits are based on combination of age and service, and we invest our money with the Pension Reserve Investment Trust, which is PRT. That's where the state and the teachers' retirement is, and a lot of local systems. And if you've got an underperforming system, sometimes they're forced into PRT. We're not in that situation.
So we go into PRT, so we're not managing our own funds.
So right now, we are 100% into PRT. The Reading Retirement Board has hired an investment advisor who was looking at alternatives, because our, PRT is investing really with a lot of focus on the state and where they are, where their funding ratio is, and we're more funded than the state. And so the concern is that their risk might be out of whack with ours. And so what we were trying to do is find ways that we can control our risk, and so there's a discussion on the table to take out a certain percentage and put it in PRT's sleeves, so that we decide where it's invested a little bit more, so that we can control how risky the investments are.
More the asset allocation than?
Yes, the asset allocation, so that we can control where the money is at, to control our risk for ourselves as we approach fully funded. So this is what the membership of the Reading contributory retirement board is, 381 employees, that includes your active and inactive. Sometimes you have people who worked for the town and have contributed, and then go and work for the private sector, and they don't retire right away, so they're considered inactive. And then all your retirees, and they're all moving down by their individual departments. This is as of the January.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you back up on that one? Oh, town school, never mind. The top number, 284, is a combination of town and school employees.
Town employees, but then there's people who work at the school who are teachers, who would be maybe our sister. So this is information from our last valuation, which was January 1st, 2017. I mentioned we are going to have one in 2019, we do them every two years. It shows you that the actuarially determined liability is over $173 million. At that time of that valuation, we had just under $128 million, leaving out about $45 million unfunded liability and a funding ratio of 73.8.
That looks bad, but it's really not.
It's actually very competitive, yeah.
Compared to what other towns?
It's better than the state by far, honestly.
Well, I mean, it's, better than horrible doesn't mean it's great.
No.
Okay? I mean, it is better than what's horrible, and, you know, we should be proud that we are there, but, you know, we cannot back away from the continued, you know, trying to make up the underfunding of all of those years. That's not a small number.
No, no. And it's mandated by the state that we're funded by 2040.
Well, it goes on the front of our balance sheet right now.
Now it shows.
So it's not, it's not a note anymore in the back.
The bond rating, you just see, everybody knows, anybody who knows our financials knows who it is, but now it's on the face of the financials. If you weren't knowledgeable, you would see it for sure.
You have municipalities around the country going bankrupt over this. So, you know.
It's a, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Sharon, do you expect that unfunded number to go, should decline as the years pass?
We've seen good investment returns, so I would expect it would be down. The other thing that affects this liability number is whenever we do evaluation, we improve our assumptions, and that can kind of push your years out a little bit, because we do improved mortality table, which is a more recent study that determines how long people are living in retirement and all that. I mean, usually what they find is that they are living longer, and so that actually changes your liability. We also will improve anything that we want to correct, so we're saying, oh, well, I think that this assumption for increases in salary is too high, we can maybe change that. There's different assumptions that we're making when we're creating that valuation, and those changes could be drastic to the liability, so it's like a balance. You could have great returns, but if we make, like, to decrease the discount rate or our expected rate of return from 7.65 down to where they're expecting us to be, maybe 7.3, that can change the liability huge. So we're expecting that we had great returns, but it's hard to know how it all plays out when you factor in the improvements that we make in the assumptions to.
And this, every two years?
Every two years, so that's going to happen at the end of this year, January 1st, 2019. So it'd be nice to see what those numbers look like.
So just one last question on this slide and the previous ones. Previously, you were talking about how town employees fully fund their pensions in most cases, yet here we're seeing an unfunded liability. Why is that?
Because for 40 or 50 years, they were just paying as they went, and the employees weren't putting in enough to fully fund their own. And so there was a share that should have been paid by the town, and it wasn't being invested to make sure that money was there for their retirement. So there are people who are retired and have been retired for years that we, you know, still.
That's what I was getting at when I asked you if you expect that number to decline, not, you know, not to get into morbidity.
What I will say is we have a date of fully funding of 2029, but once we are fully funded, we're never really fully funded, because there's always that, they're always doing, you know, the valuation, they're going to assume worst-case scenario, and for police and fire, there's probably always a little piece that is ours because they do retire earlier. So it'll be drastically reduced from what we see now, but there'll always be some piece that the town should be putting away, because there are situations where people who are on disability and they need to fully fund, they need to have those funds available for all of that, for disabilities, for, you know, public state, who go out at a younger age and will be living in retirement longer than, you know, an average town employee. There's definitely, even when we're fully funded, there'll be something that we have to pay every year, just won't be as big.
Well, you'll have the phenomenon also, people can fully vest and fully fund, not fully fund, but fully vest their years and their pension, and because they're living longer, they're starting second careers. I mean, and those, they're not going to be, they'll retire from one and not contribute any further, which is going to have a direct, an inverse impact on the unfund liability.
They also have limitations on how much they can work.
Right. Well, if they want the private sector, then it's not.
Because then we actually take back from them if they earn too much money. So there's definitely some mechanism there, but if they go and work in the private sector, they can earn whatever they're willing.
Correct.
If you're marketable in the private sector, you just.
Well, you look at employment rates today, there's a, there are people doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then they don't get all of their pension during those years, as you pointed out.
Well, if they, if they are working for municipal government, they're going to be offset, if, you know, because they'll actually get money back from them for earning too much. If they work in the private sector, I'm going to say municipal, there's no offset. Unless there, unless they're on a disability retirement, that's a different story. But for most people, working in the private sector is not often a set.
Thanks for, so we're trying to stop the double-dipping.
Okay, so this is, I think I just mentioned this, that we're expected to be fully funded by 2029, but we're required to be fully funded by 2040, so we're not even close. So even if we have to push out years when we improve our assumptions, or if we have a bad investment year and it really messes things up, we have to. And as I said before, the reason that you see those large payments that we owe for assessment is because for so many years, they didn't fund their portion. And I mentioned again, as of July 1st, 1996, they changed it to 9 plus 2 in an effort to make it so that there's enough being funded by the employees, so that in most cases, they are going to fully fund their own.
So Sharon, there's an 11-year discrepancy between when we think we will be fully funded and when we are required to be fully funded. And so obviously, we're putting in more now than what we could be if we just, even if we wanted just to follow the rules. So it's really, it's a choice that we're making to do the right thing, so that, you know, that keeps our balance sheet in good shape and keeps our rating in good shape and keeps our commitment to our employees.
As compared to other communities, we have, you know, a very competitive date to be fully funded, but we also have another big liability that's out there that's going to need our funding, which is the OPEB, so we're looking to that, saying, that has to get funded. It's not mandated to be funded, we've been funding it the best we can with whatever we can for the last six or seven years. But who knows when they're going to start saying, well, now you're mandated to fund that, and that would be a budget bust for sure. So you want to get on that sooner rather than later. So that's my next slide. OPEB is benefits in retirement. In order to qualify for our retirement system, you have to work 32.5 hours a week or 16.90 a year, but to get health insurance, when your employee's just 20-plus hours a week. But I wanted to make the distinction, if you're not in our retirement system and you retire, you're not going to get benefits in retirement, I just thought it was a distinction that should be made. You've got to be either a mass teachers' Reading employee, or you've got to be in our Reading contributory retirement system to qualify for benefits in retirement, even if you have benefits the whole time, if you're, let's say, a parent who works 20 hours a week, you qualify for health insurance, and then you decide on, kind of stop working now. We don't give benefits for the part-time people if they're not a member of our retirement system.
So you got to be 32 and a half hours.
Yes, you have to be somebody who's a member of the retirement system. And I also should mention, it's not a choice. If you work the right number of hours, you're in our system, it's required of you.
So let's just say, for example, you worked in the town of Concord for, you know, 20 years, and then you moved and got a job in Reading, and you worked for a few years, but all in, you know, you've done, you know, what you're supposed to do, but, you know, you only, you ended in Reading and you're only there for a few years. Whose liability is it, as a Concord's or as a Reading's?
They share. So we build those other retirement systems for their portion of the benefit. So it wouldn't be like we're on the hook for the whole, we have them for five years. And actually, we build the other retirement systems for their share. They acknowledge the number of years that person worked for them, and the agreement is very clear, and on the onset, they transfer the funds over to us when it comes from another system, when we begin investigating.
So we're managing that.
And then we build them for their share. This is the liability on the last OPEB valuation. We're still waiting on one that was just done as of June 30th, 2018. The liability for OPEB is 75 million, over 75 million, and we, at that time, only had just under 6.5 million, so we have 8.6% funding ratio. So oddly as bad as that looks, so many don't even have that, so, but still, it's a huge, you can see the numbers are enormous, and so we are kind of fast-tracking and making sure that we try and stay on timeline for that 2029, because that money is going to be needed to.
So we were doing about a half a mil, about half a million a year?
550,000, 550,000.
Are we doing more? 750, I think?
Is it 575?
575, yeah, I knew.
That's what the general, I should note that. I should note that RMLT, water, sewer, storm, we fully fund the annual required contribution. So they'll be fully funded for OPEB faster, but the general fund liability.
Why, why that not?
Because it's a smaller number, the general.
Oh, so it's easier.
Yeah, and they're able to do, you know, the number is more attainable. So what happens when you have a valuation is they pretty much say, okay, this is your liability and you want to fund it in 30 years and they tell you how much you're supposed to put in every year. We can't get there for the general fund. We can get there for the enterprise funds and we are doing it. And so that piece of it will be fully funded well for the general fund. We can't make 30 years, we can't even do the annual payment for 30 years. So once the pension is fully funded, you expect to see that those funds being redirected.
So that's why with fast pension, the pensions will get that done, so then that frees up the cash to do OPEB faster. Got it. So that's the plan.
Well, that's what I think the plan is, but it could change, you know.
That's the current plan.
To double check that the OPEB is not, does, that fund does not receive contributions from the employee like pensions do, the pension does?
No, because what happens is when we pay our benefits, just like an employee that works with us now, the town pays 71% and the employee pays 29%. Currently, the retirees get that same, that same package. But when somebody has Medicare, you could probably speak to it a little bit better, that insurance is less expensive than like, say, our typical low-class brochure. They get MedX, which is kind of a supplemental to their Medicare and it's a lot less expensive for us. And we did a lot of work, you can probably speak to it, they did a lot of work to get anybody who's over age 65 onto Medicare so that we didn't pay the higher premiums that we pay for PPOs and HOS for people that could be on Medicare and getting a supplemental, which is a lot less expensive. So a lot of work's done this past year to get that done and I think it will actually show, you know, very favorably for us.
Yes.
How is the OPEB investment? Do we do that?
Right now, it's done in-house by our treasurer, but we have plans to invest with the state. There's a health insurance trust that they do that we can actually invest in, but we kind of held off. There was some issues with needing a trust document in place and so that's kind of sitting in the town council. We've gotten all the work done at town meeting to allow us to do that. It's just a matter of moving the floor and figure out, okay, how do we put together the trust fund commissioners who are there and getting that document in place and then we can actually invest with the state and it would go to just like our pension fund.
So we control both asset allocation, they control asset allocation?
Because you'd be, you'd kind of, it would co-mingle with the funds in some ways. So PRIT would invest it all, they would know how much is for every community, but they would invest in kind of the state being their primary focus is where they are in their project issue. We're all kind of not funded at all, so we're kind of all in the same boat. So I think that we'd be, the same kind of allocation would be needed to get there, so.
So Sharon, obviously, if it's done through PRIT, there's oversights kind of built in, but if we're doing it ourselves, what, can you talk a little bit about what oversight there is there if it's our own, if it's our own board, like sort of?
Well, the custodian of the funds would be the treasurer, but that would be the job of those commissioners that we assign, the trust fund commissioners to, to be paying attention to, just like the retirement board we oversee, we look at the bank statement as for PRIT. It would be just in the same fashion as the retirement board, you know, all the regular meetings, looking at performance and making decisions, do we want to stay here, do we not? Like if performance is poor, you know, if we're sitting on a deck of the board, you know, we have the trust fund commissioners, it's just not entirely clear.
So it's the same trust fund commissioners that do like the hospital trust fund and the separate, or is that a different?
I don't know, but there would be some kind of board assigned.
Is that who's doing it now?
The treasurer.
It's not.
The trust fund has set the consent from OPEB.
Okay.
They don't manage them right now.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't, I didn't.
But that was kind of the topic of discussion of who makes up that board, who manages that fund. Before we do anything, we have to figure that out and that was something that was sitting in town councils, like, tell us how to do this. You know, that's what we're not sure of because that would be the board that, along with the treasurer, that's overseeing these investments and saying, okay, we're making the right choice.
That's an important appointment process.
So it's taken quite a while to get there, but we've done everything we need to do at town meeting to get the permission to create the trust, which we have. It's just a matter of deciding where to invest, if we wanted to with the state and how to put that board together and get that trust document in place and, you know, that has to be named in the document, so we need to know, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
We'll take a five-minute break before we go into the next session.
So, next up is Capital and Debt.
Not quite.
Nope.
More myths to dispel.
Oh, the health, the health, yes, yes, I apologize. More myths to dispel.
Very good.
Exactly. I'd like to introduce Larry Tereso from Cabot Risk slash Maya. Larry's a healthcare consultant. He's been working with the town as long as I've been here, so many years. As you'll see, we'll get into the presentation. I'll do about half, Larry will do about half, and then I'll clean up a couple of slides at the end on some other things. But the first myth that we have is, again, that the town of Reading is generous to employees by having health insurance. Now, this slide looked a lot more sort of neutral ten years ago, whereas now everyone knows health insurance is mandated in Massachusetts. Didn't always used to be. Town meeting accepted Mass General Law 32B in 1957, making this required. So it was a long time ago. Employees who work 20 hours a week or longer are eligible for health and life insurance. Life insurance, I'll touch on at the end, it's very small. For school employees, that's 20 or more hours a week during the school year only, so it is less hours over the year. Employees enrolled in the health insurance program who retire, as Sharon mentioned, 32 and a half hours a week, except it's 18 hours a week for teachers who can continue in the program. So those are the parameters it's required. If a retiree passes away, the surviving spouse may continue in the health insurance program, much to do in pension at a reduced rate. If an eligible employee is not in the health insurance program at the time of their retirement, they can get back in and enroll in the program, but there are restrictions. They can't do it anytime they want to. There are restrictions on that. The health insurance system is free for public employees, and the cost is borne by the taxpayers as they spend. Now, this story is a little different from pension. It's certainly not self-funding, but you'll start to see some differences. As Sharon mentioned, we're at a 71-29% split. There are many of our peer cities and towns that pay over 85% of the premium costs. Again, the town of Reading pays 71. I'm going to say that the average is now approaching 75-25. It's not quite there yet. Plan design changes happen in a very collaborative, collective bargaining process. This group called the Public Employee Committee, and they negotiate with the town manager. These are the Public Employee Committee. We have Arthur Vares, our representative for the retirees, is here. Regardless of what happens, the retirees always by law have a 10% vote. You can see the schools have almost two-thirds, town 17, and light department 7% vote. So there's these 16 unions, plus the retirees, that negotiate with the town manager.
So essentially, teacher contract, that's done between the superintendent and the school committee and the teachers. The firefighters is done between you, but when it comes to the health insurance, you're basically working with a committee of everybody, right?
Correct.
And so essentially, it's not a school versus town versus RML thing. Basically, the benefits are the benefits for everybody, so it's not one plate against the other. Obviously, there's a different percentage in kind of that, based on the, I imagine, how many people there are in the different unions, but essentially, it's sort of, it's like, it's one deal, right?
It is one deal.
Which I think is great.
It's 16 unions, it's either this room or the next room we meet in. I've invited the superintendent and the general manager from the light department to participate. They sometimes do, but I always have to. And that's the group that negotiates plan design changes, which are the reasons we've had reasonably good success in costs, as we'll get to. The changes that have happened over the last primarily 10 years have reduced the premiums that we all pay, and when I say "we all," that's the 71 in the town and the 29 for the employees, and shifted to much higher out-of-pocket costs. Those are the users of the health insurance service.
So Bob, if I could just, I just want to comment on that last note. That's really the rub here, is that we want the town to be financially healthy, but we also want to attract employees. So you don't want their out-of-pocket costs to be too high, or we won't be able to hire anybody. And that's the art of the compromise, I think, that has to be made.
Or also, if you think of the private, the typical private sector versus the public sector, we're an upside-down triangle. We have very few young people, a lot of old people like me. For health insurance, that's not the model you want to follow.
Right.
So if we were constantly hiring, like a law firm or like Wall Street would do, and, you know, there's a 10% success rate and a 9% attrition rate of 25-year-olds, that's a great model to fund your health insurance.
Sure.
We don't do that.
No.
Because that people tend to stay a while.
Say, yeah.
That people tend to stay a while.
They do, yes.
And they're a little greater.
Yes, they are.
And that dovetails with what Sharon was saying. It behooves people to stay in the town, to stay working for the town longer until they're older, but then you get this sort of inverted triangle, yeah.
Health insurance costs have wrecked the budget in recent years, causing an override was a relatively recent one. That didn't exist eight years ago.
Well, we did, I mean, we did say that was a budget driver, right?
The fear of it was a budget driver, but if you look at this over the last 11 and a half years, which is since I've been keeping track of things monthly, our annual rate of spend is 3.4%, and that includes changes in enrollment, which is a significant portion of that 3.4%. So the Public Employee Committee has done a really good job negotiating health insurance premium spending at a very modest rate.
But when we budget, we are assuming what higher numbers.
And the recent numbers are higher. They've been in the north of 4, 5% over the last five years, but over a longer period, you can see where it is. One of the things that we negotiated, over my objections, but I understand, I don't like to pay farmers not to farn. We're paying employees not to tell to health insurance. It's called an opt-out system.
I'm sorry, not to what?
Not to take health insurance. They have to have it, so if their spouse can provide it through their employment, and they take it, and they used to be employed by us and take health insurance for two years, and they can prove that they're being covered by a spouse, we'll pay them 25% of what we save, more or less. We'll keep 75%. So last year, we spent about $95,000 in opt-out payments, and we saved about $300,000 on top of that. If every employer did this, it'd be a problem.
Everybody would be moving.
Not every employer does this, and that was my objection to it for a little while, but it really, it has saved the town, again, you know, $300,000 annually.
Yeah.
Another myth that was true years ago is still true. The GIC would save us millions of dollars and always will. Now, I got to emphasize these are my comments, no one else's, certainly not Larry's.
Bob, for those watching at home, can you tell us what GIC is?
Yeah, that's the state-run health insurance consortium, I guess I'll say. The GIC, in my words, are a subsidized shell game. It uses mass taxpayer funds every year to subsidize the true cost of health insurance premiums. So every year, Beacon Hill votes anywhere from $50 to $200 million of taxpayer money to keep premiums down. One year, they were reported to have used upwards of $150 million in a difficult year.
Yeah.
I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying that that's a fact.
Yeah.
And if that went away, because it's a political tool, if that went away, the shock to premiums would be severe. So the reasons the product is priced as it is is because it's not floating to the market. When Reading was, Reading has looked at this for many years. The decision to join this GIC is blind to the first year's cost, so you have to sign up in the summer, late summer. You don't know your cost until the winter for the next fiscal year. And you have to agree to stay for three years regardless. You can't leave, right? So you're going in totally blind. This, as of yet, still doesn't make it a bad deal, we'll get to that. It used to be, when you went in, that you lost your experience with Larry, which Ari will talk to. Now I believe you can retain that. So if you lose your experience, no one knows where your claims history is. If you go to leave the GIC and go to the bid in the marketplace, you'll get a terrible rate. So it really was a lopsided situation here. I have heard from my peers over the last six months that the GIC is likely to be divided into state employees and city and town employees. It used to just be state employees, so that the state subsidy actually sort of made sense. It was going to be money the state spent anyways, whether it went to that or went to this. It just artificially deflated the employee's share.
Well, they can just increase local aid and give it to us, we pay our own insurance.
They could do that, but that's not happening.
Yeah.
If that does happen, then cities and towns very likely will be left to float to the true cost. And I have seen some of my peers leave the GIC that had point. I'll turn it over to Larry now to speak in a little bit more detail.
Great. So, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight. Bob mentioned earlier, I'm with Maya, technically working for a firm called Cabot Strategies. I have worked with the town of Reading and the PEC for the better part of 10 years, so been around for a little while. I would say the most common question as it pertains to the GIC that I receive, and let me just say, I work with about 25 communities on the North Shore. It's my so-called territory. There are about 130 cities and towns within Maya, about 25,000 subscribers, about 70,000 members. Most common question that I do receive is, how do my current benefits that I have with town of ABC compare to the level of benefits currently in the GIC? There are a lot of different ways to kind of get at that question, but I would say the most common baseline is, how do the benefits compare? So this slide up behind me really compares our current active benefits, or you'll see them shaded in maroon, our HMO and PPO options compared to what's currently described as the benchmark plan in the GIC, the most subscribed plan in the GIC. So you see that our current HMO and PPO plan, these two plans essentially match each other. They're a non-deductible, high co-pay plan. So we don't have an upfront deductible in front of services, but you'll see tiered copays in front of office visits, you'll see specialist copays at $45. Then you'll see hospital copays ranging anywhere from $250 all the way up to $1,000. Leahy may be 250, Mass General may have a $1,000 co-pay. So it's a co-pay tethered to the place that you render care. And you'll see a prescription co-pay benefit of 15, 30, 50 for tier one, tier two, and tier three, where the current GIC benchmark, which is expected to change fairly, some are predicting fairly radically in either this upcoming fiscal year or the following fiscal year, is essentially a $500 deductible plan. So it has an upfront deductible of $500 per member, no more than a max of $1,000 per family. And then it has similar copays to what we currently have already in place.
Is there coverage for tier four and five drugs?
So they could, great question. So, yes, but they haven't differentiated them as tier four and five. So they currently still maintain the three-tier prescription drug benefit. Last year, they did implement a separate $100 deductible in front of prescriptions in addition to the $500 deductible. That's in front of general medical care. Okay, so this spreadsheet focuses on that. In the GIC, there are many plans. Here's the most subscribed plan. Most of them, most of the plans in the GIC follow this plan structure, but you'll find that an overwhelming majority of plans in the GIC have migrated to a limited network format. So they've actually created micro networks, or they've contracted with providers or carriers where they're offering limited network plans. We, the GIC and Maya, have actually looked at Maya's limited network plan, and by Maya, I mean Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts Limited Network Plan. And recently, we've decided not to implement it, because when we did the search of providers that were in the network, it wasn't a really good match for employees. There were a lot of providers that weren't available for employees and their families.
Okay. So when you say there are a lot of plans available, you have two options up there, HMO options, PPO options. Those are only two plans?
For active employees and early retirees.
And that's what we offer.
That's correct.
We don't do the high deductible yet.
No, we're in, we're, we've discussed them.
So it looks like for most things, you're in the ballpark with GIC. Is that correct to assume?
Yeah, based on this current plan design, and this should be worth mentioning, that under Maya, you have the entire Blue Cross portfolio available to you. So we actually have a Maya Benchmark III equivalent, so we've actually matched that plan design, so that option is available, but this compares our current offering to what is currently in effect as a benchmark.
So, yes.
So the Maya deductibles apply before any of these copays kick in, satisfy $500?
Yeah, so with Maya, there are no deductibles. They have copays. So if you look at the second line in maroon.
Yeah, what does that apply to?
That deductible, you'll see that it says "no deductible."
Right.
When you go over to the GIC as a $500 deductible, that deductible for GIC, that deductible applies to just about everything other than your primary care office visits and your specialist office visits. And you'll see kind of where it says "after deductible," where that deductible applies.
Okay.
What's significant also, which can't be missed here, because it's easy to, because a lot of numbers on a spreadsheet, if you look at what Maya's done with their offering, they've put in an out-of-pocket maximum ceiling of 2,000, 4,000. So that one individual, that one family that has a horrific medical year, they went to Mass General three times, they had lots of chemo, they had things of that nature, they stopped reaching into their pocketbook when their out-of-pocket maximum hits $2,000. We've even taken it a step further, and put a separate out-of-pocket maximum of $1,000 on prescriptions. So someone's taking a very expensive prescription or multiple prescriptions in a plan year, should they be out-of-pocket $1,000, the plan pays that 100%. The out-of-pocket maximum in the GIC, that register doesn't stop ringing until the individual hits $5,000.
Sorry, I keep looking past you as you talk, because I'm reading the table.
Yes, okay.
So, Bob, just to, and to both of you, just sort of a basic question. If GIC is being funded by tax dollars.
Subsidized, I guess.
Subsidized, I'm sorry. Then why wouldn't they be offering a better healthcare deal than Maya? What am I missing?
That's a very complicated question.
It really is.
That's okay.
Yeah, because remember, the state in and of itself, I firmly believe that the state is doing everything it can to try to figure out an obvious issue, addressing affordable healthcare. Not only for cities and towns that are attempting to enroll and find a solution within the GIC, but also for its 300,000 state employees.
Right.
At the end of the day, the state is self-funded, so it can manipulate things as much as it wants, but the reality of the dollars and cents, they are what they are.
Yeah.
So they need to try to make it work. As a consultant, one thing that I've seen over the years, and that other people subscribe to, is the cities and towns that have generally gone into the GIC are the ones that couldn't get a better solution somewhere else, effectively making that specific risk pool.
It's kind of like a high-risk pool for.
A little more challenging.
Municipality.
Or challenged is probably.
Yes, sorry.
Two questions. One, I had the same question as Barry about the high deductible plan, so to the extent it doesn't harm bargaining positions or whatever, if we can get the Cliff Notes on what that discussion was about. And then the second question was, are we fully insured or self-insured?
Fully.
We're fully insured.
They may self-insure.
So the health trust itself is self-insured, but we provide a fixed cost arrangement for our members.
Okay.
And the Cliff Notes are, it is collective bargaining. I mean, it has been discussed, I want to say for four years, about it. And we're not philosophically opposed to it. This stuff is really complex.
Sure.
And the implementation of a change in the plan, as you can imagine, on hundreds of employees is complex. One of the things that Larry provides is a disruption study, so if you're going to make a chance, a change, how many different employees or retirees are affected, and what is their circumstances? And that's something the employer has to be careful of. But it's still on the table. It's not off the table.
Yes, I mean, frankly, it's also not a great fit for an upside-down triangle, right?
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Arthur, a question here, and then Anne.
It's very difficult for the PEC when we get people together. We're looking at 16 million unions.
I was going to say, yeah.
We have a large group. School department is in there, town manager is in there, and to get everybody coming together and to come up with a solution. When you're talking to the PEC, it has to pass by a vote of 70%, right? We have one group that is part of the school department that has, a couple of the unions have gone in with the teachers, and one individual has a 46% vote.
Right.
When you look at the numbers that you put up there earlier, and you see the numbers, it shows you right there, the five unions, that's five people that are going to vote.
But they represent like two-thirds.
Eight people that are going to vote, okay? They have a percentage by the number of employees they have.
Yeah.
I have a weighted vote by state law.
Yeah.
It's a minimum of 10%.
Right.
So with the school department at 46%, to a particular one, with myself at 10%, we can't control this. It has to be a 70% vote. When things are brought up by the town, if there's not 70% of the people present, right? It cannot be discussed, it cannot be brought up.
That's why it's a multi-year conversation, I would imagine?
So when we get into discussions dealing with Bob, Judy, Larry, it's a collaborative effort, and we all work well together. That has not always been the case in the past. I send an email to Bob, I get a response, same thing with Judy. We work back and forth. So we have a great rapport going amongst the group. It is difficult when you're looking at something like this, if you get individuals that are going up there, and they're deciding the fate of some of these health insurance, and what's going to happen. So it's not something where we only meet twice. It's something that when Larry presents something, it has to be looked at in depth.
Yeah. But the fact that.
We did just make a huge change.
Yeah, Larry did.
This last year, that Larry will go into, hopefully is going to impact the insurance rates going forward tremendously. It is our belief. We do not know until time comes that the numbers start coming in.
But I guess the question I have, maybe Larry, you're the best person, because you said you do like 25 different towns.
I do.
The way Reading does it, with getting all of the union reps in the room and the retirees in the room together to discuss it holistically, is that the normal practice?
So it's usually one of two ways. You're a Section 19 community, where you establish a PEC, which is the town of Reading, where you go through normal coalition bargaining, where you're not Section 19, and you negotiate with each individual union and get, you still need overall consensus. With cities of this size, most are Section 19 communities, meaning you have a public employee committee.
Okay. So the fact that everybody's in the room together and understands the pros and the cons of each of them, and they're going to collectively decipher what's best, obviously, for their members, but also for the overall health of the town, it's a better process than kind of just going around and doing?
Yeah. I mean, I will add, for whatever it's worth, this is probably one of the most active PECs that I work with, and I work with some of the larger cities and towns on the North Shore, so there isn't an option that we haven't looked at. Because it's been so active, this post-65 program that I'll go to in just a minute, we were able to kind of make it happen, and it's going to provide material savings, real dollars.
Bob, and then I haven't forgotten.
One of the things that's been most helpful in the PEC is a lack of turnover. Union leadership changes from time to time, but the members in the PEC, the vast majority have been there a long time, for 10 or more years. Because this is a long-term discussion, that's really good.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Bob. Anne Landry from Fintown?
Sounds like the town and the PEC have a really good working relationship. I just wanted to clarify an understanding that I have, that in other municipalities that have moved to the GIC have been able to do so as a right without necessarily getting any kind of approval from the unions to do it, though, and under the assumption that they're going to receive cost savings and move into the GIC. Bob, is it true that we might see, we would see immediate cost savings if we move to the GIC, but there is just too much long-term risk there because of the way it's subsidized by the state?
I don't believe we would see short-term savings. One of the things, I want to be real careful, because I'm familiar with a lot of examples in some of our neighbors. One of the shortcomings in the analysis that's been done by other towns is, if everyone stays in the same kind of plan, they go to the GIC, we'll save this much. What happens when they don't stay in the same plan? It happens when they migrate to another plan because it's cheaper now, so they can go to a more expensive plan. One of our peers, not too far from here, projected saving, $3 or $4 million a year, they saved $200,000. And then that savings evaporated because they changed their split down to 85-15 from 80-20, so they lost money on the deal. So this stuff is really complicated. And in addition to the complication, that $10 million, it's the single largest item we have as our budget. If you think about Sharon's discussion on five or six million dollar pension item, respectfully, that moves like a dinosaur in terms of direction, you know? Maybe it's not funded, maybe it's not funded fully, and it moves in a slightly different direction. But the funding is always going to be up at this point 5% a year. Health insurance could go up 20%, it could go down 5% in theory. It's very volatile. So this stuff is complicated, and you want to move it carefully. I can't think of any of my peers that have chosen that option you do, but I know that some towns have. My general comment would be, that's the cities or towns that have had not so good relationship with the unions, otherwise they wouldn't have had to do that. It's almost like a nuclear option, where we don't need to talk to you, we could just implement it. And you can only imagine how that comes back. And you can only imagine how that comes back at the bargaining table over wages.
So, Anne, if I could add just a little bit of color to that.
Yeah, I think, did you have a follow-up comment, Anne, before we proceed?
It's really going back to a couple of slides and points. So, the average, it's a 3.4 annualized, and you said recent years has been four or five. But our assumptions, when we structure the budget for recent years, it's been about eight.
Seven, seven and a half, I think, yeah.
And what is it for FY19, what's our assumption?
For FY19, it was seven and a half. A little complicated, because the override added a lot of funding to that budget.
And so, even though historically, and even recently historically, it hasn't been that much, we still think that that's a, it's just a conservative.
It's a conservative.
It's a buffer.
It's a conservative way to do it. It's certainly a discussion we have annually with FinCom, it could change. One of the concerns we had, which I personally don't feel is as risky as it was maybe three, four, five years ago, is seeing the plus 20% number all of a sudden, when we didn't expect it. That's not going on nationally anymore, except in certain pools, small businesses. The discussion we had with FinCom is, let's have a conservative number, and then you agree, anything that's more than that, you use free cash, so we don't have to adjust budgets in the middle of town meeting. There's no good way to do it. If you budgeted 3%, and it came in at 5%, you'd be looking for money every year. It's an art, not a science. I'm open to whatever FinCom really wants, but this way has generally produced savings. And the other wild card is, we don't always know what enrollment.
Right, that's a big thing.
Part of it is, you know, with an override, obviously, we're hiring more people in the town and the schools, so we knew that. But we don't know what personal situations are in different families, and whether there'll be more or less enrollment with the exact same employees in a given year. And we've actually found that changes in enrollment have been more impactful in a few years than actually the premiums were. So, again, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're just going to make a comment, a quick comment to one of Anne's questions to add some additional color, because there is a lot of detail in that analysis of potential savings. But I'll highlight one quick fact. As of September 2018, we have 641 retirees on a Medex plan, a retiree Medicare plan. That plan in the GIC runs about $400 a month. Going into 1-1-2019, that rate with Maya, for a better plan, less out-of-pocket cost from the retiree, is about $333 a month. So, it's 70 bucks less per retiree per month. So, there's this perspective of that the GIC can save money, for certain communities it can. There's a lot that goes into the calculus, isn't my ultimate point.
Yeah.
Thanks. So, the next slide is a Maya value proposition. I know folks aren't here for a Maya commercial, and I'll spare you all of that, but I am going to highlight a couple of things that I think are important to the folks in this room that you'd want to know about. First of all, Board of Directors is run by other town managers, other member cities and towns, that they actually dictate the use of surplus, they dictate our rate bands, they dictate everything Maya develops from a rating perspective. But more importantly, I'll tell you what you're really getting from Maya. Any credible group, and by my definition, a credible group is an entity with more than 100 employees, where claims dictate your rate development. You're not a small employer, you've got more than 100 employees, where you're credibly underwritten. You're really buying two things from any insurance pool or any insurance carrier. You're buying administrative expenses, and you're buying a claims discount. So, you're buying a provider contract from Blue Cross, and you're buying an administrative contract from Blue Cross. A couple of years ago, we had gone out to bid. Lots of our members, every once in a while, go out to bid, and they realize that the Blue Cross direct quote, it's the same claim coming through Blue Cross, why are the Blue Cross rates higher than with Maya? That ends up being a function of, we're providing an administrative cost basis that a small entity, not 70,000 life entity, but a 2,200 life entity can't otherwise get. And in that includes stop-loss insurance, you know, admin fees. So, you're getting the most aggressive administrative contract in the marketplace, in arguably the most competitive claim discount through Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Massachusetts. If you were a city or a town with 50 employees, that discussion's different, because you're larger, because claims ultimately determine the rates you pay. You want the most aggressive claim discount, and you want the most aggressive administrative cost basis, and you get those two things with Maya.
That's because of the size and the breadth.
Because we're 70, we're, Blue Cross is second-largest client behind the federal government. We're able to, as I mentioned earlier, we're able to provide an administrative contract to your rate development, where Blue Cross directly would have to charge you more, because they would look at you as 600 employees, and they have to get their administrative costs covered over 600 employees, where we have economies of scale with 70,000.
Got it.
That matters ultimately over time. And that probably ends my Maya commercial. Ultimately, that's what you really care about. Yeah.
Sharon?
Yes.
Just a question. So, from what it looks like here versus GIC, we seem to have a very nice-looking plan in terms of not having a deductible, having very low out-of-pocket coverage, certainly compared to the private sector. So, that, I would imagine, is kind of a philosophy, how do we get employees who work on these things? That's kind of point one. As it relates to our experience and how we forecast what the increase should be each year, rightly or wrongly, we end up blaming you for the big numbers.
I'm the grim reaper.
Yeah, he wants to be blamed. Okay, so, why the big numbers, and why we can't.
Yeah, so, let me remind folks that for 1-1-19, our retiree renewal is a 0% increase. For FY19, July 1, FY19, our renewal increase is a negative 0.6. That is the level of inflation that we charge on the rates that we bill the employer. Your budgets, when you guys look at your budgets, those numbers may not adjudicate the same way, and that's where the impact of enrollment is material. For, as an example, I did literally back-of-the-envelope math, as you guys were talking about liquor licenses. We have approximately 50 more folks covered in September of 18 than we had in October of 16. We have 69 more total people covered, meaning spouses and dependents. If I did the rate differential on a per annum basis, that would account for an impact of velocity of enrollment of about $271,000 a year, just by having more people on the plan. Where that rate on a piece of paper was a negative .06 or 0.6.
The budget.
Your budget says, wait a second, my numbers say it's really a plus 3 or a plus 5, because we have more people. So, the velocity of enrollment is the only thing worse than medical trend.
Well, but we did, we did, we did take that into account. The override was going to provide new positions. We put 5% benefits in there to, I assume, to accommodate the higher cost of adding new people.
Yeah, so, of course. A quick follow-up, because I'm kind of jumping ahead, but just to make sure I'm understanding the numbers. You're predicting that 2019 is going to come in below 10s, and because the sheet we're looking at shows it's only going up 1.5%.
Are you talking about FY20's budget or FY19's?
20's budget versus 19 expected.
Look out there.
Okay.
Maybe still. So, Larry's last point here is, you know, the relationship that we do have with the PEC and some of the changes that Maya's offered. We haven't made all these changes, but we've made some.
So, every July or every, really right around Valentine's Day, I drive all around the North Shore and deliver rates of increases of sorts, right?
With the chocolates.
A man on horseback, when I ride into town, says, "Hydro women and children," and his kid says, "He's here, he's here." So, that's what I do for a living. Can't change it at this point. So, boards of selectmen across the Commonwealth, mayors, town managers continually ask, well, what else are you doing to bend the cost curve? Yes, we need to talk about Section 22 or Section 23, we need to get together with the PEC, but what else are you and Blue Cross doing to take an unsustainable trend factor and kind of move it the other way? So, we have come up with some pretty interesting things, some we can't take credit for. For example, the alternative quality contract is nothing Maya did. That is a provider payment system that Blue Cross has set ablaze with their providers. Their trends are coming down a little bit more aggressively than the Harbors and the Tufts of the world, although some good news, we are seeing trend start to moderate. Remember, trend inflation is not off of a static number, it's off of a balloon that was previously gotten larger. It's not always off of 5, it's not 5% to 500, it's 5% off of 900 or 800, something like that. So, the alternative quality contract was a game changer for Blue Cross and for the trust. We're seeing, we had a high trend of 9% in 2009. I'm wearing my underwriter hat at the moment. Trend is now kind of working its way down to 6%. And that's a composite trend of medical claims and prescription claims. Medical is around 4%. Prescription trend is around 9%. Put those two together, you get about 6, 6.5%. We've come up with, every Blue Cross product offering, the entire trust makes available to their members. So, it's not as if you, when you sign up for the GIC, you can pick from, yes, seven plans that all look the same. They all have the same deductible, just a different network. We all, you have any benchmark plan you want. We've created limited network plans, so if you want to throw in an option that costs 7% to 10% less, you can, but the provider networks are smaller. Employees knowingly go into a situation where they're picking a smaller network. We've got telemedicine, we've put up, we've put together, Blue Cross has put together a product called SmartShop, where people are now getting paid a check, being sent a check at home for going online and shopping for care. We shop for everything else, but we don't shop for healthcare, we just go where we're told. The thing that I'm probably most proud of, that Maya has come up with, that I think is a present game changer, we've came up with a new product called Post-65. You had about 30 or so folks that were not eligible for Medicare, that were retirees in the community, but were not eligible for Medicare previously, they hadn't worked enough quarters. Most of those were probably teachers that were hired prior to 1986, that were making contributions to Social Security, so they never put in enough quarters to qualify for Medicare. So, under state law, you're still required to cover those folks, Medicare will take them. If you consider the morbidity, the age of these folks, most are pushing 70, 80 years old, they're a little on the older side, because of when they first worked here. You, as a plan sponsor, are responsible, because ultimately Maya is a clearinghouse. We take your money and pay your claims. Right? That's really what we're doing at the end of the day. So, you have these people with higher morbidity that you are, whose claims you are otherwise responsible for. So, those claims every year would be baked into your cake, your renewal cake that I would deliver you on Valentine's Day. So, we've came up, we came up with a program where we were able to make these individuals eligible for Medicare. Actually, we didn't make them eligible for Medicare. Medicare always said in their bylaws, you can still enroll in Medicare, you just have to pay an extra fee. We put this fee structure together, had our actuaries come in, our underwriters come in, and calculate the expected claims for Redding just for these individuals. So, we were able to come up with a formula where we got these 30 folks or so onto Medicare. Medicare is primary. They're now paying 80% of these claims. We're now paying 20%. At one point, we have pretty much factored that these 30 or so folks were probably responsible for anywhere from $300,000 to $450,000 a year. We took those claims, where, again, you are effectively funding, and put them in Medicare's We're the first trust to do that, we're the only entity in the state doing that at the moment. These all, if you think about it also, these retirees who are experiencing the previous plan design that we had up on the screen, are now experiencing also a Medex plan. These retirees were calling for, how do I get onto Medex? Just because I worked 30 quarters and someone else worked 40 quarters, why do I have to pay what active employees are paying when I can have what my retirees have, which is Medex? We got them onto Medex and shifted probably $300,000 to $350,000 worth of claims every year over to Medicare, and those are claims you aren't otherwise paying. Now, you do pay some additional costs in paying for folks Part A penalty and Part B late enrollment penalty, but net, that's expected to save you about $200,000 or so a year. We also wanted you to realize that savings immediately, we were so invested in Post-65, that we actually gave you 1.5% rate decrease last year. That was, that's what got the 1-point-something percent increase down to a negative .6% increase. So, the retirees win, and the town wins. The real loser is Medicare. They're paying the claim.
It's a different volume.
Yes. The PEC, this was brought to us by Larry. He gave us a timeframe, and they brought it to us very late. He gave us a timeframe of one week to look at this, accept it, go forward. With the help of HR, with Judy, Larry, we asked for an extension. They gave us a three or four-day extension, I believe it was. We were able to accomplish this and pass this within the one-week timeframe. I being the responsible party for those retirees, representing them. I could not in good conscience vote for this, without the 33 people in this room having to explain to them, and then asking questions, and then Judy would go up and call the doctor's office and say, will you accept this? This was all accomplished in one week, signed, sealed, and delivered.
Wow, terrific.
Yeah. So, the reason why it was late, this was a, this last year was a pilot program. We had sent all our data over to Millam and our actuaries, and they crunched all the data. The idea was that we were going to start rolling this for FY20, but the data came back a little sooner than we thought it would, but a little late to get decisions made. We looked at the data and picked, we basically decided, we can roll this out to three communities. Maya asked, what are three communities that have the profile to actually get this done within a short window? And it was because of the relationship that we had in place with the PEC that it was decided that if we can get this done, this is a community that can get it in time. And we did.
Thanks to the PEC retirees. So, to finish up this section, we also offer life insurance. It's very modest expense, you'll see in the budget. We offer other insurance, but we don't actually contribute any funds to it. So, you can buy dental insurance, there's disability insurance for some school employees, but again, the town does not contribute to any of that. So, I'll thank Larry, and Larry, you can go home now.
Yeah.
I'll now answer Mark's question and some other, and actually talk about the budgets for next year.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
To get back to the health insurance.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I can attest to the fact that when we come to our final agreement, the last words that are said to him is, make sure that you educate Board of Selectmen, Select Board of Nala, you have the finance. and now, yeah, the finance committee, what the PEC is doing." We did that at the financial forum. And shortly thereafter, you had the 2.5 override, which was publicized.
Yeah.
And a member of the finance committee told the people that were watching that the override was due to the health insurance. Shortly after that, there was a letter written to the Chronicle saying the same thing by a board member, that I had employees calling the school department, employees calling me and saying, "What is going on?" We spent a lot of time to handle a 0.06 rate, and then we're getting criticized. So we do not feel that we have the backing of the board nor the backing of the finance committee.
The backing of the Select Board?
That's correct. When I see an article written in the Chronicle and I fired off and emailed the board, I sent him an email the night that I was watching the 2.5 override. Bob can attest to the fact that he got the emails, right? And the committee was not happy with this. We're trying to do a certain thing, as Larry has brought up to you. The numbers, when you pass an override and we do something good with the Post 65, and it comes out with an increase. You would have had a larger increase if we hadn't done what we did. But when you see the negative impact from people sitting in this room, you have to realize that as public officials, what you're saying, people out there are listening to. And you talk about transparency, it was not the health insurance that drove the 2.5 override. Last year, we committed very good.
It does sound like some tremendous work has been done. We don't question that. And not that we're FinCom. But you've also got to understand, we've been told for year after year, we should be putting double-digit increases in. We're the one who brought it back to the 7.5.
You said double digit.
There were double digits for saying that we should put double digits in for quite a few years. That was the recommendation you were given.
National Health Insurance Transplantation.
Right. And you won, you know, there was discussion of putting a bigger number than 7% to 8%. We brought it back to that. So it felt to us as we were going with those assumptions that we had those kinds of increases. In reality, year after year, we didn't, and that's an awesome thing. But we always had pre-existing assumptions in there. And I think that's where some of that contradiction came in.
Thank you. Quickly go over, I'm sorry. The budgets for next year, retirement, the chairman went over. The retirement board sets it up at just over 5%. The new FinCom policy on OPEV, I cranked it up a little more in the first year and then it'll level off. You can see the total pension funding is just under $5 million. Workers' comp, not a significant change. Here's the health insurance.
Yeah, what are we budgeting for that?
For which?
For the health insurance.
Up 1.6%. There's lots of pieces to it. I don't want to talk about every one of them. But I will tell you this number here, the current year, excuse me, you'll recall at November Town Meeting, we moved, I think it was 205,000 out of the line. And I said, "We could have moved more, but we didn't have anything to spend it on." And that's true. So the increase is really a little more than 1.6% based on the real run rate, whatever it may be. I understand from Larry, we don't know the range yet for Maya. We don't know the range of the country's health insurance for next year. But I do know in the Maya pool, we will be below average of an increase. So I don't even want to make up numbers, but if there's a range and there's a midpoint, reading will be below the midpoint for expected numbers. But one of the challenges that Larry faces with his actuaries is he doesn't get us numbers in time for our budget process very easily, as FinCom well knows. Ideally, we'd like to have this number, oh, probably in December, maybe even sooner. We push him as much as we can to get him to drive around on Valentine's Day. The range will come out in the last week of January. The governor usually says that at the MMA conference. By the second or third week of February, we know our number. Last year was the third week of February. That's pretty late in our historic budget process. And for last year with the sped up process with the override, it was very late. But it was good news. So the timing has always been a challenge on this. I'm very comfortable that this number will be fine. It's quite possible it'll be too high. I don't think I'm going to know that by the time I legally have to present a budget to FinCom, so this is probably what you'll see. But as we discuss things, or perhaps on the floor of Town Meeting, if we know this is too high, we have that flexibility. Medicare, we also added some money to through the override. We don't need to increase that going forward. And the net, the net on benefits, it's a pretty nice 2.3% increase. And it's a pretty large percent of our budget, as you see at 18 million. So the benefits budgets, very well behaved, I guess I'll say.
So after the previous discussion, just for a second, so the notion of that 11,470 would be similar in assumption to what we've done over the last few years, which is something in the 7%, 8% sort of range as an expectation.
Correct.
With FinCom being asked to fund any override out of free cash as a recommendation.
I would have to go back and check the exact number, Mark. I think it's seven. It could be seven and a half. It's one of those two, seven or something.
So I mean, I guess it also begs the question a little bit, if, you know, historically, you know, we're in the threes and fours, we're budgeting in the sevens. What it's doing in the beginning part of the budget process is that it's crowding out maybe other things that we could do that by the time we get the numbers and we get to the, you know, we've sort of maybe lost the opportunity to kind of look at other alternatives. I'm not suggesting that we budget at three and a half, because then we got to go to free cash. It gets to be four, five or six. But is, you know, maybe it's a good thing to discuss by the time, you know, just sort of, well, if it, maybe to have some kind of thought about, well, you know, we're budgeting at seven, we're really running at four. If it comes in at four, this is maybe what we could do. Because, you know, every department had came in with something that was compelling, right? And is it sustainable? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, we're not going to do something because, you know, we have the money one year and can't do it then. I mean, that's irresponsible. But, you know, we've got a seven, eight, nine year now look back and, you know, we're getting, you know, we're getting some kind of trends. I think maybe, does it make sense for us then to, at least on the municipal side, kind of make some priorities and say, "Okay, if it comes in here, we can do A. If it comes in here, we can do A plus B." You know, because, I mean, I don't know how to decide between what Sharon wanted and what Gene wanted. I mean, that's really, in a way, your call. But I think maybe it makes sense to kind of look at that if we're going to be, you know, you know, if we're going to be consistently over budgeting that number at the expense of crap and lots of things that we might want to do. And that's just, it's just philosophical, just kind of thought.
Yes. Hard to argue philosophically, but I'll say that looking backwards is not the same as looking forward. One of the last three or four years we would have missed, it was up north of eight something. Not a big deal. You know, if it comes in at five now, we'll be very happy. Historically, we've assumed seven or seven and a half. I can't remember. That's $200,000 total. Not a lot of money in a $100 million budget.
But not incidentally.
The theory, many years ago, FinCom used no free cash to balance the budget. And that's partly a whole nother discussion. But part of this health insurance assumption and state aid assumption has been to take out what you just said of the budget process and to front load it. So to give a number that the superintendent and the town manager could build a budget on and be comfortable with and confident it's not going to get worse. Now, we never really imagined it would get better. But I'm always open to that discussion, as is John. I think that the difficulty would be is if you suddenly have a bad situation, it's very difficult to have gone through a public budget process and then need to cut it.
No, I know, I know. But it's just.
This is a high-class problem, as they say. Not a good year.
Yeah, right. Right. I'd rather have it coming lower than the opposite. But, you know, there's still, you know, the override gave us some really good things. But from what we heard over the last couple of weeks, you know, the department heads came in and said, "I could really use this or that." And they're not, it's not, it's not a, you know, nice to have. These were, these are things to help run the department. So I just want to keep that in mind when it gets to you guys, you know, we'll continue that discussion.
Vanessa, I can't see Vanessa. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I literally can't see her because of. I'm partially blind, so she raised.
Thank you. Yeah, so Barry, FinCom has had these discussions in the past, and the concern is that while it could be funded for one year if we, if the numbers work in our favor, in year two, that may not necessarily be the case. And so you could be, many of the asks that came forward from the department heads are in the form of hires and so, or positions. So the general consensus has been to be hesitant about hiring something that is not predictably sustainable. Now, if we wanted to have a list of priorities that we could, that should the premiums come in at X, Y, or Z rate, what we do with that 50, 200, 300,000? I think that would be great.
And that's definitely.
And I think that would be a nice option. But I would hesitate to do it with people.
Just a quick advocate. About the point also, the other thing is that we know state aid, we seem to be overly optimistic every year and never achieve.
I'm not optimistic at all.
The assumption is, I'm betting the outcome isn't.
Totally.
So there's a little bit of a balance, but the notion of, this is great.
And?
Very similar to the way Mark just said, that last year, I think I quoted the ideal, but it was not anything that FinCom voted on, that we lowered the number of the assumption on the, I'd vote the assumption about how much money can be taken from state aid because we're acting more accurately what we've seen in test years and similar to, and similarly lower the assumption on health insurance. And perhaps in a way that's actually sort of budget neutral, but it is more accurate in terms of what we see in state years.
Yeah, yeah. I've been, Chuck.
I love the talkers. We're here for the.
You may talk, please.
I totally get, and I've been sitting on my hands here, but I totally understand why, you know, we've been, but I look at the angst that we've gone through the past couple of years, not just the override year, but the year before.
Yeah.
And a lot of that was driven by the money that was, the funds that were needed to account for the health insurance estimates. Maybe if we had used 4% or whatever, we wouldn't have gone through the same level of, you know, I remember the middle school teachers coming up two years in a row. I don't know, I'm just, maybe that wouldn't have happened if we had budgeted more closely than, and I understand why we were conservative, but, you know, we should have a longer conversation on that when it gets to the 50% level. You know, that, I think we went through a lot that we maybe didn't have to go to after the actual numbers came in, people worried about their jobs or whatever.
Yeah. Maybe that's what led to Arthur's comment too about kind of, you know, we're working our tails off and everyone's thinking that it's us. And I get, I get that. That's a compelling point, and I think it's important to know.
It's a complicated discussion because you have state aid that's unsure, health insurance that's unsure, and the use of free cash. All three of those work together. Any one of them you could look at and criticize, but I think the combination is okay. It can always be improved. FinCom this year went down to a million from a million two at the financial forum, which made perfect sense. There's no easy answer. This isn't math. This is art.
Don't forget the uncertainties in RMLD.
But you just want to make sure that you're not focused on any one of these aspects because it's really the big group put together. And again, I understand, I understand totally it, I'm sympathetic, but the most important thing to the school department and the towns is some sort of floor, some sort of budget certainty that doesn't get removed in the middle of a process. Imagine a budget that looks like it's perfectly fine, it goes through the superintendent's hands, your hands, and all of a sudden, we get some development in February that causes the middle school language problem to happen. That'd be horrible. So again, it's a collaborative effort. There's no easy answer.
Bob, to follow up on some of the comments we've heard tonight, and I've always been somewhat fusticated or uncertain about, we seem to, you know, we seem to always think the state would be more generous than it is. And so in the budget, we have a greater, we count on a greater amount of state aid than we invariably don't receive. And on the other hand, we seem to over budget somewhat for health insurance. So is there a way to sort of, I understand that all three, you know, that and free cash, they're all related, but one thought would be to have those items, the budget reflect what we, or closely what we think may, may happen based on our past experiences.
Yeah, I mean, again, there's no right and wrong way here. Well, there's a lot of wrong ways. There's no right way. One of the reasons for the 2.5 is so we can yell at our legislators, "Couldn't you at least get us 2.5?" Whereas if we budgeted zero.
Right, then they're heroes.
And you'd be surprised at how much factor that is.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been getting 0.8, 0.7. The school aid has been terrible, you know, with per student. So again, I'm not saying that's a right or a wrong thing, but that's another factor.
Just wait till those construction trends start coming down.
Yeah.
And less.
Well, you know, I think that we should double our expected state aid.
We should say five. So if there's no questions, I'll quickly move on to capital, and this discussion's will be brief. I wrote the board a memo to update the five areas of capital, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on some of them, but I'll hit them quickly. And I'll speak for the superintendent. The first and most important capital project, large capital project for us both, is building security. I hope through this memo, you understand that we can't possibly accomplish April 2019 Town Meeting action on this. It's just, it's just, procurement's not going to work. It's conceivable that we could, at the fastest, ask for a special Town Meeting next fall. Or this could wait to November Town Meeting next fall. As you can imagine, one of the challenges will be, we'll certainly meet with the elected boards and FinCom in executive session, but the amount of detail we can share with Town Meeting and open session will not be typically what Town Meeting wants. You know, we'll have to just give summaries and give general statements. And I know that that's not what some Town Meeting members are used to seeing. They'll just have to accept, for security purposes, that's what we'll do. So this, that'll also be an element of the discussion as to how to approach this, is how to provide information. And as those of you that were in executive session, the one we've had so far, we've just got summary-level details. I can't say offhand that we wouldn't have shared all those with Town Meeting, but there's definitely a cutoff of information, I guess I'll say. We have not heard anything else about any kind of state funding. The elections over, the bond bills, you know, may or may not happen. We'll still certainly look at those opportunities.
We're assuming that this is on our nickel, right?
I would assume that, and, you know, we'll hope for the best. We'll ask certainly in a loud voice. But I expect that we'll come together on this sometime after April Town Meeting with a definitive timeline. We don't want it to go past next April Town Meeting. We have to do something. So that's our first priority now. In the capital plan, that's still set up for approval this April, and we'll discuss that in the budget process. I'll leave out elementary school space study to the school committee. Community center, we've done nothing further, so I'll skip that. I know that Vanessa and John are working on capital. I do want to spend a little time on recreation, but I want to hit Public Works just to get it done. And just thank you for your indication during the budget process that economic development should move forward. That was very helpful. We do have some, hopefully, we'll have some meetings set up in September with a local community as well as in Pink Hill.
September or?
December.
December.
December. Yeah, since September, I've had a number of meetings, but now we can go to the state. I do want to talk a little about recreation. FinCom requested a Town Meeting approved $200,000 for TURF II. FinCom requested a town meeting approved 200,000 for Turf Two. That procurement process is underway. I've met, I want to say four times with the schools on this with recreation and athletics. As opposed to what I said in October at the financial forum, where I was hopeful that a special town meeting could speed things up, there's just no chance. We've gone over the procurement process. We've gone over the thoroughness we need to do, and we are going to be challenged to bring FinCom in the budget. I'd have to present to FinCom good details. The timeline's not great for that. I'm much more optimistic that for the town meeting, we'll be able to have those details. And I'll just apologize in advance that this could be a floor of town meeting thing. We'll do the best we can, but we, we do want to absolutely get this right. For Turf Two only, we are pricing, I guess I'll say, four options. One is the field as it is for size, one is extended. One is the field with lights, and one is without lights. So if you do those combinations, you get four different prices.
You mean with existing lights?
With the, to replace the existing Turf Two lights, or to leave them there.
Leave them there.
So those would be the two costs. Staff, facility staff will also estimate for Birch Meadow Fields and what that would cost to do at the same time. We are not using the 200,000, that's not what it was for, but because we'll get that work done on Turf Two's lights, and we already have estimates previously unupdated, we'll be able to do that. So that we'll be able to present some body that makes decisions with all of this information. Ultimately, it will be the school committee, if the timing were out, that can make, that can vote on a plan moving forward. And then FinCom slash town meeting can agree or disagree with the school committee. But Turf Two is their turf, so to speak. And it is the hope that this will fit into the January timeframe, although we're not at all certain of that, that school can, may be able to take action. It may not work out.
Bob, a question on this.
Yeah.
In your memo where it says pricing options for Turf Two, replacing as is doing a significant field extension, previous language described a slight field extension. Something changed?
No, it's just my words. That's significant in the cost.
Okay.
And honestly, it was presented in the past as you had to do it. I think we've now seen it's an option. So it's an option that should be evaluated. And then the lights, the same way, I mean, honestly, if you're going to do a field, it seems to be audited to the lights. But let's price it out, let's put a menu out there, and then, you know, hopefully in times for school committee to make some kind of a recommendation. And just as, just as a reminder, all those other recreation and athletic projects are not funded and can't be in the current version of the capital plan.
And when you talk about providing an estimate for lighting the other fields as well, in the past, you alluded to the thought that doing all five fields might have some cost savings baked into it.
Yeah.
Are we going to see both versions of that, you know, the à la carte and the all-in?
Yes, but that'll be staffed on, so it won't be as precise. Yeah, you'll be able to see that. And I'm assuming the, in the capital plan, it's two years from now, so my assumption would be, here's the cost to do it today, and here's the cost to do it in two years. We're going to estimate.
Sure.
Vanessa, did you have a comment?
I had a question for Bob. Bob, has the recreation committee weighed in on the, so Turf Two, we, everyone has agreed is a high priority, but for the other Schmeddo needs as far as lights or other facilities, has recreation weighed in on their priority list?
Yes, they did that two years ago.
They did, and I know they're doing another survey right now.
I know the survey just went out. That's why I asked, so the priority list that they did in 2015, I don't know if that's changed since. So before we prioritize the Birch Meadow field lights, I would want to get input from recreation to see...
Respectfully, what FinCom asked us to do is price everything. It doesn't make any sense to ask recreation anything until we have that. Then we can share them. Here's the pricing. What do you guys think? And that makes perfect sense. But to ask them now, I don't know what we'd be asking without having prices.
Even without pricing, just what their need is from a use or repair?
And I'm assuming that's why they included those questions in the survey, to find out what the community thinks.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Bob, just to recall, Turf Two, the size of Turf Two now is too small to be a full field. Is that correct? It can only be a practice field?
I mean, the fields are used for school boys across, no, for field hockey, field hockey, sorry, goes across that parker. So the field is used for practice, for some sports. This, the possible, or the option that's going to look at the extension, would allow it to be used for more sports?
Yeah, for games.
I think you also have lighting issues around that.
There are lacrosse games at the stadium field because they need that, the girls' field is larger in the game.
Oh, right, the boys, sorry. The boys' lacrosse play there, and so girls' field is a little...
The rules of the game require a larger, sorry, a larger field.
So we, the way we understand that extension at this point is that that's something that is really more of a want than a need, but it's being evaluated. And so the committee will, when all that work is done, as Bob said, that'll come back to the committee to really evaluate.
Yeah, I got it. Finished?
John? So I think to that point, Elaine, isn't there also a lighting issue with Turf Two as to its usability?
It needs a light.
Their lights have to be replaced.
The safety issue of lacrosse ball, the lighting there now can't, can't do that. They can't play night games. It's a safety issue, and it's not a decision which is made. It's, I think, believed, it's basically...
Yeah, it's used for practice, but game, game conditions.
Because of the speed of lacrosse ball. You can use it for night soccer or whatever, for youth, but not for...
You're saying somebody misses a catch or an errant ball?
It gets lost in the lighting because of the lighting signs.
Yeah.
Okay. So that was going to be one of my questions, why, why replace the lights? But, you said. Barry, yeah, please.
Oh, no, if you were going to, no, no. Well, I guess, I guess my point is, I know, Bob, you went through this really quickly, and sort of the recurring theme of all these things, while we recognize the need and the urgency, there's sort of, either we don't have enough information in terms of what it's going to cost, what it's, how we're going to design it, what we're getting from the state, really don't know sort of how we're going to finance it. And then that in turn, some of the stuff may be done, things that are going to be required to be done outside of the levy. I think it's important that as we develop this thing, the way we kind of did with the override is to, is to give out a level of expectation about when we might go to ask the voters for something. And granted, none of this stuff is flushed out enough to kind of do that yet, but at some point, some of these things are going to have to go to the voters to ask for some type of exclusion. I think it's sort of important to lay out even a very, very cursory timeline about what that might look like broadly and when. Because the thing that I think we all learned from the last override process was, even though you say something 100 times, people are going to say, you never told me that. Right? So I think we have to start saying it now 101 and 102, that this is going to be what we're kind of looking at. It might not be in this year, two years, or three years, but that's going to be the horizon about when we might be going to you to ask for some assistance. And by then also to library, high school stuff, that's starting to kind of get in more of our rearview mirror. So I know we don't have enough to do that now yet with, because all those things are just, it's all too much up in the air. But in terms of what a timeline is, what an order of magnitude is, I think it's important that it just, you know, it could be an agenda item on everything that we do that says TBD, but it just should be out there so that folks know that at some point, we're not funding this with just what we have in the bank right now, and what we're going to do on our operating stuff, it's going to, it's going to happen. We need to set that expectation about that it's going to happen. And again, I'm sure we'll still get five years from now when it's a Killam School or a senior center, oh, you never told me, I wouldn't have voted for the override five years ago if you told me this. We're going to get that, but I just think it's really our job, this board, school committee, FinCom, to really just start, just talking about it. It's going to happen, you know, obviously, we don't know when and what, but we need to set that agenda. We need to set the table for that, that's all I'm saying.
I think that's the stuff.
Well, we've got to keep saying it.
Bob, just one question.
Sure.
Could you just quickly explain to the uninitiated that are watching, the difference between, you have a number of words listed within this table. Some say debt slash, or debt and A, some say debt, and some say X debt. Can you just quickly explain to the public, because the differences are important?
Debt is debt. X debt is excluded debt that's already been issued to the high school, the library. Debt and A is not yet authorized by town meeting. So it's a plan, it's a planning document. We haven't asked anyone.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably the only kind you have on this. Occasionally, there's debt and I, which is not yet issued. It's been authorized but not issued. So there's still some uncertainty on the cost or the timing.
So, so the X debt or the...
That's things like Barrows would end...
That's something that we've gone out and asked the community for, for money, and now we're paying it off over an extended period of time.
Outside the tax levy.
Outside of our, yeah, what we receive in taxes, tax levy.
And in terms of Barry's comment and planning going forward, there's $5 million on the left in that sort of tan box of recreation slash athletic projects. There's Killam, or the elementary school space issue more broadly.
Yeah.
There's a community center and the DPW project, none of which can be funded inside the levy in the next 10 years as of today. Now, the only, I was thinking of what happy things could happen to change that. We could get $4 million of building security grant funding, and all of a sudden, we have $4 million that we're planning to spend, and we can do it on something else. But I just don't see a lot of happy surprises that are going to change, especially those last three, because they're large. The recreation athletic things, you know, a million, 2 million, 3 million, you might be able to squeeze one or more of those in. This is the kind of discussion we had just before the library, but maybe we just didn't put it in the right context enough. So I agree with you that it needs to be said, and I understand that if all of a sudden it's a year or two from now and Turf Two's been repaired, it's going to want to, a lot of people wanting the stadium turf done, and it's going to need it. We can't afford it right now.
Is a question for you?
Yes, sorry.
I would just like to clarify and make sure that what we're talking about is elementary master, elementary planning, space planning, and enrollment study. It's not specifically focused on one school. We need to look at everything programmatically and make sure that we are making the best decisions. I think everyone recognizes that school, Killam School, is going to be part of any solution, but we are looking holistically at this.
Which means that it could actually be more than just Killam.
Right, so we've been very explicit at, using the term that...
I just used Killam because it was one word that described the problem.
And people, then we give calls.
Yeah.
We can just say elementary, you know, space planning.
Killam in the mix.
Yeah. Thank, that's a, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
Speaking of call, my home left a few days, which is kind of not long for me. I think Barry's point is spot on. I think that kind of seeing all these things together and understanding the difference between, here's kind of what we've got in the KD versus what is going to be outside.
Yeah.
But if you look at some of the projects also, and I'm not taking a shot at anything, there's not really a champion yet for the community center, senior center sort of activity.
Correct.
And that probably is something I would suggest that the board might want to think a little bit more about, is how to, how to talk about that.
I agree.
I think that will help frame the discussion.
Yes.
Better for people.
Well, we had, I mean, Jane came in here, I don't know, six, eight months ago, and we got a full presentation...
Maybe last winter and then recently, who was part of the board?
A presentation about just the total inadequacy of what they do and what's needed. So I think that kind of set the framework, and, you know, again, these discussions are all, you know, I guess the champion would be us.
Well, not only is it inadequate, it's, you know, serving the fastest-growing population and ready.
Absolutely right.
Which is another interesting sidebar to that.
But, and yes, it's on the board, but I think as people are thinking about, gee, how do I want my tax dollars, or even the school's debt dollars to be spent?
Yeah.
Right now, it's on the list as, yes, it's a problem, yes, we're looking into it, and normally there's, you know, there's no update since September. It's only been three months, I guess. But, okay, what is the process? How does that move ahead? How do we think about, in the sense that there are studies that are done for what the school needs going to be, what's the need going to be here? You know, taking it forward, taking it to the next steps, bringing it up there and saying, okay, you know, we're going to have some options that range from, you know, refurb to redo, you know, use open space that we have, et cetera. I know it's in the discussion, but it doesn't have traction yet, if I can say it that way.
Yeah.
And it probably does need to get traction, so we can understand the priorities. And last but not least, I think on the, on the likely of the Birch Meadow fields, I think kind of sharing, it's the recreation committee, whoever it is, here's, here's what the need is, here's why, here's what's happening with this particular field, and why it can't be used. Here's what happens if, if things change in terms of opening times, closing times, things like that. Here's kind of the expressed need and why. I think that will help people. And Barry's point, it tends to reinforce the matter two times.
And the sooner, sooner we get on that, I think, the better.
Yes. I mean, I mean, the one thing, I mean, I get nervous when we say, well, this project needs a champion, because what it means is, is that, you know, we may have, there's a number of things here, and I would hate to see the discussion framed because they're, you know, again, for, for lack of, you know, that they're more active people who want to see us, you know, sort of the school stuff done, and there's maybe a less active voice for seniors. I don't, I don't want to see, I would hate to see the discussion framed as sort of pitting one group against another. I think we need to frame it in a way that kind of says that, you know, a senior, you know, that the champion of this is not just the seniors. Champion is going to be the town because we view that as, as a priority. And so what happens is, like anything else, when you have lots of needs and limited dollars, you know, I don't want it to be the louder voices win. And so, you know, that's got to be sort of put in there. And maybe as part of the school, you know, the school space, are there opportunities to look at sort of situations where we share some, I mean, I think we need to get out of the box and, and look at the, the needs outweigh what our available funding sources are. And I don't want it to get to be, you know, schools versus library, seniors versus school. I mean, we can't do that. We just can't.
Yes, Vanessa.
So one of the things that I think is important to this discussion is that we've talked about and set aside this year, which is the master plan for the town. I'm not saying we should update every data point, but I think it would behoove us to work with the school committee, with FinCom, with CPDC, with recreation, to identify, with RMLD, we have some, we have space available in the town. This building, as it stands now, barely houses everyone. What can we do about that more broadly? So I think, you know, I'm glad that the school is moving forward with the elementary school space study. I think the town needs to take, needs to take a similar approach to evaluate what we have in a broader fashion.
Yeah. And then we could, we could highlight that in some way in the capital plan.
Hey, maybe we can make another subcommittee.
Maybe stop that. Yes, Dan?
Yeah, I wanted to say a few things about the DPW building project. One half of the concept has been talked about extensively, the great cooperation between three towns, potential negotiations with Ken Curtis Kyle and the state. But what is the primary reason for doing this project? It's not, in greater amounts than we're going to be spending on this. So my question, and I'm going to be a dog about this thing, whether I'm on the board or not, what is the town doing to satisfy the question people are asking? How are we going to engage a real estate professional, is that our new Andrew Corona or someone else to tell us what is actually feasible on that side? A lot of people are dreaming eight-story Marriotts. I don't think so, but something of a smaller scale is likely. We have to know what those proforms are. We have to know what the economics are. Otherwise, why are we doing this? And FinCom, please stay on top of this. Ask the right questions. And FinCom, please stay on top of this. Ask the right questions.
Right, it could be any one of a number of things. It could be...
But let's get the question answered.
It depends when you ask the question as to what the answer is. When Andrew asked it two years ago, housing was the biggest answer. And I don't think any of us wanted to hear just housing.
Not just.
Possibly.
Could be a component.
Possibly.
And if you do something like a Redding Woods, which is a cash cow, then that makes sense.
Yeah, so we looked at, you know, the cost benefit, students coming in. You know, roughly, we're looking at, I'll pick a pretty wide range in purpose, two to $5 million of revenue.
Fully built out.
Fully built.
And then you have to time that out with the need to go to the voters and ask them for $30 million.
Or whatever that is.
That's going to be a tough sell.
Yeah, it's complicated.
Unless you put some kind of a total package together with the developer, right in front money for that.
Right, and having two or three towns makes it even more difficult.
And that's actually how we cap the landfill. We got the developer to kick in and do that work.
Yeah, and just, it is, it's a complicated thing.
So please, work on the other side of that, don't you?
Sean?
So on that point, and Vanessa, your comment about this building spurred a thought too. Bob, is there an opportunity with these conversations starting in December to maybe even think more ambitiously about what we could do with the site at Kerteskow? Is it, you know, can we create more space to alleviate space constraints in this building? Or rethink how we use this building, or anything along those lines?
They have bigger guns than we do, and they're not real interested in cities to begin with. So it's, it's an art. It's a negotiation. I still think it's very possible. There's a lot of reasons for that. But we have to be careful with our ask. One of the reasons that a DPW is acceptable at the margin is because we both work on similar natural disaster events and serve the same community. So the missions are very closely aligned, if you think of it that way. And that's not something I thought of until a couple of years ago, as we discussed it. Whereas a senior center, it's like, what? Why would we want that here in terms of missions aligned? So it's, it's an interesting discussion. But, you know, land is a tough thing in this town, and a lot of it. But people very creatively reuse it, as you see all over town. So, you know, we've talked about for the senior center, one of the board members know, we talked about doing a land swap, building swap, do all kinds of creative things you could do. We'll continue to discuss.
Bob, I'm sorry, could you just reiterate for all of us, because it's been a little while, what the top, you mentioned the top three or four projects that, that we're going to have to go debt exclusion for? Or something, they're, they're the biggest items that we don't yet have made for. And I understand...
Elementary school spaces is one. A community center.
Yes.
To the extent that's different. And then the DPW project are the three largest projects.
Yeah. So, I think we, this, this board, or somehow we need to come up with a process and prioritize those three. Yes.
If I, if I may also, a very important, a key player in this is the permanent building committee.
Yeah.
They don't prioritize and they will not decide, but they will help a great deal in any of these projects.
Will determine the feasibility and what the options are.
One of the things that we've learned, Joe and Kevin go to most of the meetings, if not all. One of the things I've learned in the last six months is the PPC is a little further downstream on a process and a project than I might have guessed. Which is fine. But they, they're not interested in being, at this point of the discussion, in this room today with us. They want us to hash a lot of that out first, and then they want to come in when the community has made some decisions, whatever that means.
I can't say I blame them.
Exactly. They learn the hard way. But they are a key player in this, and as Barry knows, they are meant so that we don't repeat some of the mistakes in the past about rushing study without information.
So, I'm just asking the board, the board this, is it our job to start getting the word out on these three needs? Prioritizing these needs, discussing, discussing these needs?
Well, I think Bob is on lead, if I'm not mistaken, in the charter.
Well, and, and we have a subcommittee.
Yeah, you have a subcommittee.
We've already actively met.
There you go.
And we'll continue to meet and, you know, bring back, you know, what we're finding based on the research. I mean, it's in motion.
Good, good.
And to summarize capital, if I had to submit a budget, it's balanced to FinCom. Today, it's the same one, November town meeting as well. I expect by the time I actually do submit it, it'll be a little different. You know, two or three small capital items that get added. I don't know if any of these bigger things will be solved by then. I'll, I'll try to present you a couple scenarios, in case this one moves up, in case this one slows down.
Time.
Yeah. Just do the best I can.
I'd like to caveat my previous comments by noting that the school committee has a, obviously a large role in the elementary school space discussion.
Probably the role.
The role, yeah, we're, you know...
That's pretty hard.
I didn't want to step on you. And hope it didn't step on me until I was there.
Okay, so I think we're now ready for Jane to present the enterprise funds.
Yes, great. Jane, we'll start off with you first next time, maybe? Let's go live.
Come on, Charles, this stuff's interesting.
Jane, sorry for the delay, but I think the questions were, are helpful for the board and, and the community in part.
So, this is the DPW chat again for enterprise funds. And the reason I put it back up is because I want to show you Water Sore has 15 employees. And there are no openings. And stormwater, same thing, no openings, open positions, I should say. And of course, the overlight did not affect any of those groups. So, Water has about 111 miles of water main in town. Two, two main tanks, Auburn Street tank that you'll be seeing in the next couple of years to be replaced. It has 750,000 gallons. And we're going to a composite elevated tank, so it will not have to get painted again, it'll be good. And then we have the Bear Hill tank that has about a million gallons. Two booster stations, and we'll drive, which is currently getting renovated in Lofford Road. Over 7,700 residential connections, 71 simple ones and 240 commercial. In 2002, we did master plan. It was updated 10 years later. And we've been working off of that plan. In 2019, it was about $100,000 to put into the capital to look at, where are we now? We've added all of these developments. So, you know, can we, to do a hydraulic study to see what the impact of those known developments are in the future ones? So that should be coming up somewhere in the springtime. The funding for all of that master plan primarily comes from a combination of, of course, the annual capital plan. And we've received over $4 million from the MWR to fund them. So, I mentioned the LCCA program last time. It's where we do all the testing, living carpet testing and town building, schools and all the foundations. And we've done all of that. But I think as important that it's, it was really well laid out in the master EP actually has incorporated that in their training and education program for, like, how to, how to manage this, this task. A water conservation program that we have, we've given back over $600,000 to residents and rebates for washing machines, toilets, rain barrels, irrigation. We have a lot of water-saving devices down at DPW for people to just take, sign off and take. And so that has helped with the consumption. We have an average of 44 gallons per person per day, which state averages 65, so we're 33 roughly percent less, which is pretty remarkable. And so the two major, you know, projects coming up are the Auburn Street tank and working on some of that. And you'll see the main street water main cleaning and lining. So that's just started. So when I start thinking about some of the things that Redding does that's kind of unique, that makes us different, the unit directional flushing program is one of them. And, and so we used to do flushing where you would open gates on both ends and the water would come out through, like, the hydrant. And so we worked with a few consultants and they said, if you do unidirectional, it's a stronger force in one direction, so it cleans the pipes a lot better. And, you know, higher velocity, it uses less water. Because before, they used to just sort of run it at 15, 20 minutes. And now they have this very set program on how long to run, run it. So we started that a couple of years ago. We're going to continue doing it. It's been really successful. So we have redundancy now with, you know, our, our water. We have a 36-inch MWR eight pipe that went in that, you know, I know affected a lot of folks in town. So, you know, that's done. We have two new water bolts in Auburn, Lannis and Hopkins. And the next step is we have a SCADA program that sort of monitors all of that. And that's near completion, but not, you know, should be in the next few months, by the end of the year. And then in FY '20, you know, we're looking to hopefully reduce a beam in some of the wells, which would be a cost savings, since we have that redundancy. And there'll be some funding, I think, in, in April to, for FY '20 to do that.
From the state?
No, we're hoping to put some money in to have a study done to say, what's that part? How, what do we have to do? Because it is a long, yeah, from the state, but it's a long process. So we want to be able to do it, do it once, do it right.
You're right, yeah.
So I mentioned training before, but I think with Water, it's kind of important to note that out of those 15 employees, nine of them have distribution licenses, which is remarkable because there are communities that don't have one person with a distribution license. So the fact that, you know, these guys, it's a, it's a difficult license to get. We have people D1, 2, 3, our supervisor has a D4 license. And so, I mean, that, they know an awful lot about the life distribution system as a result.
Jane, before you jump, are we fully compliant? Our buildings on lead now? Old town school?
No, well, Killam, when you say compliant.
So you said that we have a, a program?
We have a program, so we know what, what some of the issues are, but we can't fix them at all. But I think Killam has like water that they bring in, or, you know, they have, they, yeah, that they can only do hand washing. We know what we have, put it that way, but, you know, we can't fix all of...
Is that the only place right now that it's compliant?
I think, I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Think of anything, Charles? There's a few other locations that we've gone to hand wash, but it's not at the drinking pump. The Killam is the...
Killam is the only one.
And that one can't be addressed until it's a broader... Actually, just to correct, birch metal, we have a couple of bubbles we took out. We also have a bubble that's there too.
I was wondering if a source of the damage was inside the buildings or the inlet of the water mains like in residence? Should any residents be tested?
So, so we have just finished a complete lead audit that is, was required by the DEP. We're way ahead of a lot of communities in doing that. So we, we know exactly how many lead lines are in town. And we're actually tracking even boost decks where other folks aren't even doing that. So we know where we are with it. And in the next year, again, we're going to be looking to see how do we, how do we approach remove those? Because you can't, you know, do everything at once. But we always remove all, all lead lines as we do replacements. So we're pretty good, but there are, we do have lead. That's all we ever used for many, many years.
So, do we have to test our water?
Yeah, so residential testing is part of the program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So the source system consists of 108 miles. I should say there's about 36 wells, potable wells in town, you know, that...
So people have done on their own property?
Yeah, yeah. So the sanitary source system's about 108 miles. We have 12 source pump stations. The master plan that was developed in 2010, we look to replace, you know, the 12 of them, aging reasons. We've had West Street and Batfield both replaced at this point. Charles Street will be starting in January. We had a little meeting last Thursday night at the police station. Two attendees that were very interested in that pump station, other than that. So that, and the remaining nine will be replaced in the following 10 years or thereabouts. The other thing that kind of makes us really unique is our INI reduction, infiltration and flow reduction program. So...
Jane, could you explain what that is, infiltration versus inflow?
So, we have, so you don't want to have, like, water, anything going into your system. You want it to be as airtight as possible because you're also paying for whatever's, you know. So it's, it's sort of sealing, there's a lot of, it's the next slide, actually. So it's looking at manhole rehab, you know, because making sure they, they are well, you know, constructed. The CCTV inspection is like a camera, sort of robot that goes down to sort of looks at, you know, is there things leaking into the sore? We clean, we, you know, do cleanings that's outsourced. We seal the manhole holes because sometimes, you know, water could leak into it. And then we do smoke testing. We put, you know, pipe smoke through the pipes. And it should come out through somebody's chimney or the manhole if it comes out other places, then you know you have leaks. And then we have two vacuum trucks.
So you're, you're talking about groundwater, this general groundwater leaking in to, to the pipes?
Right.
Where there, there cracks.
Right.
Or illegal connections sometimes?
And, yes, and legal connections, yeah. And, you know, we have found more and more. I mean, the system is, we just did smoke testing again back a few months ago. We probably do it every few years or whatever, but we pretty much know what's, what's hooked up at this point. We have two vacuum trucks, which, you know, again, is unusual. We, I think we had one that was about 10 years old. We replaced one last year. They are a godsend. The guys use them all the time.
They vacuum out the, the...
Septic.
Funny ways.
Yeah. So, so just, for instance, back, back in, about three months ago, Charles Street pump station started to fail right before we were going to get it replaced. And it's the largest pump station in town. It carries about 1,100 residents, so...
That was a fun phone call to get.
Oh, yeah, it was scary. So Peter Isbell, who's the water and source supervisor, is phenomenal. And he, you know, he was trying to think of like, what can I do? How can I fix this? Because it was going to cost us an awful lot of money to bring in that contractor faster and whatnot. So he used our two trucks, tried it, our two trucks did not keep up with that. So he hired another three or four other back trucks. And he brought them all in and they just kept up with the flow and he got those pumps fixed. Yeah, yeah.
So only have like 72 hours before houses were going to...
Oh, yeah. It was, yeah, he was, he was white. He was white.
So, just for the general audience, explain why, I know why you need a pump, it's very important to have a pump station. The purpose of the pump station?
Yeah, so some of the, the flow, I mean, depending on the angle of the pipes, it's not going to go anywhere. I mean, you got to, you got to push it up and out.
Or go back.
Right. Or go back.
So the pumps take that to a higher elevation than...
Right. And when they're not working, it's backing up, backing up, yeah. So, so this, for the first time, you know, it was kind of big news, I sent Bob about a month ago, for the first time, all of the pumps and all of the sore are working, you know. Some are chugging along, but they're all working. So that's, you know, that's a real testament to their, their work, really. So stormwater is just rainwater or melted snow that runs off streets. I think people, you know, kind of confused sometimes, like the catch basins, the manhole, whatever. This is like water that goes into the catch basins, that's fine. But it goes out into, you know, pipes or, and then ultimately into, you know, areas where, what we're, what we are now measuring is the outfalls. That's the MS4 permit. So we have to measure what's in, what's in there, what kind of contamination is in that. So... So, and the other thing is like we're finding that when we're cleaning out the catch basins that people will put in like, you know, the dog thing. All of that is like not good, you know? So, yeah, there's a lot of, people just think it's sewer. It's not sewer, it's stormwater.
You don't sweep everything from the street into those.
Do we still give a petroleum dumped in there or not so much?
I don't hear about that.
Oil changes?
Yeah. I hear more about the dog stuff.
Well, they just leave it in the town forest.
Yeah. So that's that. And so we have several apps which we're working on. There's this catch basin app and it shows you every catch basin in town. And that's the green, they're all inspected. The red ones were inspected, but they have issues. And then there's a few white ones here and there and those haven't been inspected yet. So we're using an awful lot of apps. The Water has an app for their gates. They have one for the unidirectional flushing. So the guys have these, the G-Tex, which is kind of a tough book, and they have access to our water and sewer cards and other GIS. So they're good about tracking that. And that's just a quick snapshot. So we have one person primarily who's doing all the catch basins and he sort of goes around and says, you know, what was in each one of them? And that helps at the end of the year for the tracking that has to be done for that permit, too. So, and, you know, it's also good for being able to plan because at the end of the year, you know, the supervisor knows, hey, I've got to do X amount of catch rate. These things are falling apart or this one's fine or whatever. So it gives them a lot of data that they didn't have before. And it's just an extra few minutes that it takes them to do it. So some of the challenges is, you know, are the funding. I mean, you know, it's, when you think about it, we have 111 miles of water mains and they last about 100 years and it costs roughly about 1.1 million roughly to replace a mile. So, you know, if you're not putting in, you know, a couple million, let's say, average every year, you're not going to keep up with that.
Right.
And so, you know, also the bandwidth between water and stormwater. So it sounds like there's a lot of people, 15 people, but they do an awful lot. They oversee an awful lot. So we have a lot of projects in a pretty active town in making sure that, you know, our infrastructure is well managed. Now, the problem is that we're in the streets, so we do kind of get a lot of calls about, you know, traffic and this and that. So all of these projects, unfortunately for the most part, we're disrupting neighborhoods and whatnot, but they have to be done. The technology, we have a real need for continued, you know, the G-Tex for field because that's what the guys use. That's what we want them to use. They have access, you know, remotely and we want it that way. And the training on how to use them to do that. So that's one of the things, I mean, we have several guys who are well-trained in it, but we're always looking, you know, every year to add more equipment and have them trained, have more people trained. And then the unknowns, like things that happened with the pump station and water main, you know, that's just, you know, any structure, but it is very disruptive. So level one summary, there weren't too many changes. Again, I was talking to the water and sewer supervisor. He has two long-term seasonal that he was using at one point when he first implemented the unidirectional flushing. And he said, you know, it's going so well. He goes, I would rather have one permanent person that could help with it and then some short-term seasonal that could help with, you know, painting hydrants and that type of stuff, what used to happen, like some help, you know. Water expenses, you know, we have licenses for the hydraulic licenses and various things that, that software is just increasing every year. So I just added someone into that. And because we're in the streets a lot, I put additional money into these details. Sewer expenses, there really weren't many changes with salaries, so it was just mostly the contract. But again, the software licenses have increased. And stormwater, there was a slight increase in overtime and then again, the software licenses.
Very. Jane, I have a question. This comes up all the time and I know it's been addressed year after year after year. Given with all the conservation, basically, I think we have the same problem with DPDW, not selling enough water.
Yeah.
Like that's probably not selling enough electricity. But there's still kind of a demand out there for people to kind of put in a second meter, you know, dealing with irrigation because it's not going down. I know MWR-8 charges us, you know, a fee per water that we use, but a lot of that stuff, if it's used for irrigation, it's not going down the story. And so, you know, is there an estimate about how much revenue we would lose on that? Is it something that we could look at again? Is it just something that, you know, we wish would go down a rabbit hole and never emerge? Because we get calls on it all the time.
You do.
Yeah. Bob.
I think the last time we discussed this, and I apologize if it wasn't a full, as opposed to different members, I know it's been both, we thought we really needed to do a full presentation before you next set water sewer rates, which is typically, I don't know, March, April, May. It could be before or after town meeting. The objective would be not to lose revenue, to just rearrange the revenue.
Right. So. In other words, you'll need to raise the rates on people who don't have second meters.
Correct.
For sewer especially.
It's a zero-sum game.
Is there a minimum rate that people are charged?
Yep.
If you are a person and you live alone and you use less water than a family of four, so you are still charged a minimum rate?
Wow.
Thirty bucks, thirty bucks.
It's very low.
Thirty bucks a quarter.
Probably the cost of reading your meter.
Right.
Yeah, that's the theory.
The reason I ask is, you know, as we talk about seniors, you know, this seems like something that might hit them disproportionately. Has consideration been given either to reconsider that? It just, it seems like they're, by hitting them with a minimum, they're seemingly paying more than their fair share. Is there an administrative reason for that process?
You can't discriminate based on age. So you can discriminate based on usage.
Right.
So one of the things the board discussed but never went too far on in the past was tiered rates. People that use zero to something pay a lower per whatever and it goes up. So there's a handful of communities, not a lot, that do that. I can think of two communities that have tiered rates. And it hits, you know, a car wash, a hospital, a business a lot harder because they're the biggest users of water. So that's one way you can do it. And effectively, the older person that lives alone at home is going to be one of the lowest users.
Although, we're doing an economic development agenda. Do we want to be, you know, that's another thing to look at.
So we can present the board some data on distribution of usage. We have done that in the past because once upon a time, we thought of perhaps moving some of the water debt onto the property tax and we had to study the correlation between those that pay taxes and those that use water. So the data is available.
I don't know about the rest of it.
I'm going to say there's not a lot of low, really low users. There's not a lot of low, low users. My guess is it only happens when someone goes away for three months.
Right. I mean, it's so low that it's really more about, I think somebody used very little water, they would still go above that, very little water because the minimum's more just, yeah, I'm shutting down my house for the winter or something. Right, it's very low.
The greatest threat economically is the passage of overrides, seniors. There's no way around that, okay? This pales by comparison to the impact on a senior from override. So what we can do to avoid overrides, if we manage our money, is great.
Well.
I mean, it could still be worth reviewing, right? As we talk about various ways where we can help seniors, it's a little here and a little there, start adding up. It might not be the answer, but it seems like it's worth exploring.
So that'd be great if we can just get the distribution of the second meter and we accept the rates next year, just to look at it, even if we just say no. But just to say we would.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
So that summarizes the budgets.
Yep.
The two takeaways I get every year, especially the last two years, you don't know and you don't get to see what other communities are like. I do a limited amount of that. Our budgets are put together with a lot more long-term planning than most. You saw a little more of that tonight because of things like water and sewer and capital. But that goes throughout the organization, that no one is interested in short-term benefits. They're interested in long-term benefits. And then part two that you did see a little more of last week is the departments really work together very well. Employees tend to work together very well and that's been by necessity in the past. That's the way we've avoided some overrides, is not having too many kingdoms by having people that work together.
Right.
So that there's no such thing as a slow time in the collector's office. They have other work to do. Certainly going forward, I don't know what you'll have to say tonight. All is welcome, but you don't have to conclude things tonight. You can send me comments. We can meet and discuss. I need to balance a budget in January.
Is there a preferred way for you to get, I mean, we're not meeting. This is our last meeting of the year. Happy New Year and Merry Christmas, everybody. Is there just, you know, just sort of individual emails from us, phone calls?
I'm open-minded. In the past, not last year.
When would you need to die?
Your next meeting would be helpful. I need to give FinCom something probably towards the end of January.
Don't you give that to after the schools are done?
Yeah. And the schools, I forget, they're voting, I think in the third, I'm sorry, the fourth week of January.
Okay.
And the Capitol, as you know, this year will be a little complex, but if you want me to, I can try to create a spreadsheet of summary of some sort of things that people brought up.
That would be helpful. I'd have to review.
I haven't done it myself yet, so I've just listened. I mean, I'm aware, but I haven't created...
But when you do it, just CC us all.
Maybe with a brief notation about the claim benefit of the additional person.
Yeah. Bob, did anyone go through the presentations and identify the requested extra positions?
Any of us?
Any of us, yeah. I think...
You mean it's a summary?
Yeah. I mean...
That'd be the next...
Well, Bob is going to be putting that into his recommended budget and maybe some will be there and maybe some won't, but that's...
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, and when I, it's not just about money. It's not about what we can afford even this year and next year. I'll give you a perfect example of Jane still in the room. Jane has asked through her department for a number of changes from long-term seasonal to full-time employees with short-term seasonal, such as she did tonight. Let's say she asked for six. I don't remember. It's four to six. Even if we could afford to do that, I would not do that. To go out and have to hire six people in the short run next summer is too much risk, too much hiring risk, too much budget inflexibility going forward. Some of those, and I don't know what priority we'll discuss them, could well be great ideas. When I'm trying to balance a budget, it's not just to make the numbers work, it's to make sure that you have flexibility going forward. So some of the requests, when they're for full-time employees, get a lot of scrutiny. And I would much rather have two part-time employees than one full-time employee because then if one of them leaves, at least one of them still cares. And if you need to have two people in an office covering at some point, there's two people doing the job. So there's lots of components that aren't just money. Money is sometimes kind of the easy part. But we try to have these discussions, not every department's the same. We don't have any part-time police officers, for instance. But we try to work this out, again, with a longer term in mind. I'm never anxious to add full-time employees.
I didn't notice much in the presentation that you sent us. I could only find...
There was a few clerical.
Yeah, I think Sharon had one.
Public service services.
No, you didn't.
Had two. No, Sharon? Sharon's had a couple, three, five hours, yeah.
The clerk's office.
Clerk's office, HR.
The clerk's office and the...
That was it, okay.
HR.
And then additional hours here and there.
The generals.
No, there weren't a lot.
There were not a lot, right. And I think that the police asked for another cruiser because they have police officers, which makes sense.
They replaced two a year. They need to replace three a year for a couple of years and then they'll be fine, go back to two a year.
Well, I think one of them, the report was that it was not worth, you know, putting the money into it.
Yeah, that's the one that November town meeting replaced.
So you asked for feedback.
So I'll try to organize it in some way that you can indicate, but free format feedback's most welcome.
Does anyone have anything, does the board or FinCom, anyone have any thoughts and the requests that have been made so far? Yes, Mark?
Sorry. To the end of the discussion on people letting people, it'd be great if we could kind of have a S R O F T E's certified department. I know it's...
Haven't I told you every year that's hard to do?
Yes, you have.
I'll tell you again.
It was done this year, which is great.
Hard to go back too far. And to be honest, to go back five years.
Again, it's more interesting on what we do than the number of slots that do, I think.
FTEs are what our bottom salary line is roughly. So I think it's important to know that. For me, I didn't see any great increases and I'm sensitive to the fact that we'd like to make the override last as possible.
Yes, I couldn't agree with you more.
Minimizing the hires, unless you consider the willingness to say...
That's a really good point. Same here. I would much prefer to spend money on a one-time thing and then have it again next year for another decision, unless it's really a crucial need.
Yeah. So any other thoughts or can we wrap this?
Bob, thank you for, and also to the department.
Thanks to everybody who, especially the ones not here.
That participated three nights.
Especially the ones not here.
I think for those people who paid even modest attention, they'll realize how hard people work and how much gets done with limited resources. So I think that that's an important...
It's a very diverse amount of work.
Yeah.
That's always...
We have some minutes.
We do. Three seconds.
Table those.
I was going to ask the board if...
I'm ready to go.
I have some edits.
I have some edits and we have nine minutes to go. Bob, will you get in trouble with the town clerk?
She was just here.
She was just here, right?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
How about, do you want to do one set, the 16th? Because we're almost two months away from that.
Yeah, we can.
Why don't we do one set, the one that was on the agenda?
We may run over.
Well, you can start an article of business before 11:00. You just can't take up anything else.
Right, yeah.
It's like the old American League.
Board calls, whatever you want.
Let's just, can we table? Some of them came in kind of late and I have...
No, that's a fair statement. All right, that came in after that. Anybody can request draft minutes. He's available now.
I'm cool with it. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you.
I came up with an all-inclusive Merry Quansica.
There you go.